All right, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Pastor Roman Tarplin, Executive Pastor of New Faith Apostolic Ministries in Rex, Georgia. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me.
Mr. Chair, just make this Now Faith Apostolic.
What did I say?
You said New Faith. It's Now Faith Apostolic.
Now Faith.
So I bring you all greetings from Now Faith Apostolic Ministries in Rex, Georgia. Psalm 131 and 1 Rees. Behold how pleasant it is for brotherly to dwell together in unity. Unity is the state of being united or joined as whole. It's having one mind, one strength, and no division. God, today we say thank you for all that you've done for all of us, our community, and the great Clayton County. Thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many blessings, your grace, and your mercy. Thank you for the gifts, anointings, and knowledge that you've bestowed upon us. And we do not take this for granted because with you there's nothing, or without you there is nothing, but with you all things are made possible to them that believe. And on today, we believe that as our elected officials of this great county called Clayton come together in unity with one mind, one strength, and no division, you will give them new wisdom to govern our county affairs, conflicts, and issues in our communities. Give them renewed sense of the needs of our people and the confidence to follow you and to allow you and your will to be done in this meeting on tonight. God, allow our leaders the ability to work together in harmony. Even when there's honest disagreements, we pray that you bring them together in peace with resolutions. Finally, God, whatsoever things are true, whatsoever things are honest, whatsoever things are just, whatsoever things are pure, whatsoever things are lovely, whatsoever things are of a good report, if there be any virtue, if there be any praise, we pray that we will think on these things. God, we thank you for allowing us the ability to be actively involved in our communities, given our input and useful work for the benefit and the progression of this great county called Clayton. God, we say thank you, we love you, we give you glory and honor, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 19th, 2019 Regular Clayton County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Does any members of the board would like to offer any amendments?
Yes. I would like to take off the consent agenda K and R, 2019-40.
Is that K and R?
Correct, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
My second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she now?
I would also like to remove item E from the consent agenda.
You said what, E?
E, just put it on a regular agenda, no particular reason.
That's item E?
Yes.
All right, is there a second?
My second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she now?
And I also like to take item R off the consent agenda, put it on a regular agenda.
I did that.
You did that one. I'm so sorry. Fighting allergies, forgive me.
Any others? All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is she now?
Next, we will have a proclamation. Proclamation presented by Chairman Turner to Central Services Department for recognition of March as Purchasing Month.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners observes March 29th as Procurement Month. Whereas the Clayton County Central Services Department has a significant impact on the quality, efficiency, and effectiveness of Clayton County government through its centralized procurement system, and whereas the Clayton County Central Services Department recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency, established by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession. And whereas the month of March has been designated as Procurement Month by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, and purchasing organizations throughout the world engage in efforts during the month to inform the public about the important role performed by procurement professionals. And whereas the Clayton County Central Services Department hosted a business certification workshop on March 6, 2019 to increase knowledge of available programs, eligibility, and benefits for small, local, women, and minority businesses. And whereas the Clayton County Central Services Department scheduled a procurement open house and vendor drop-in on March 14, 2019 to further expand awareness of procurement functions and opportunities in Clayton County. And whereas the Clayton County Central Services Department will host a how-to-do business workshop on March 26, 2019 to launch a series of workshops to enhance small, local, women, and minority business knowledge, the process of doing business with the county. Therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as Procurement Month in Clayton County, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to engage in efforts during this month to recognize the importance of the role played by the procurement profession in business, industry, and government. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 19th day of March in the year 2019.
Next, we will have a presentation, Modern Citizen Advisory Group Update by Keith Parker.
Let me say this while Mr. Parker is coming forward. He has a wealth of information, some that we know about, some that we don't. And I want him to share this with not only me, but with the other commissioners and with the public and all, on some things that we really should be aware of and that probably don't know of. So hopefully, he can get this in a few minutes here.
And I'll be mindful as well not to go too long. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Turner, Madam Vice Chair, and the rest of the commissioners. I, on behalf of the Citizens Advisory Group, would like to just share a little bit of information and how those processes have been going along. But I'd like to share a little bit of history first. Some, three-plus years ago, I was placed on this advisory committee. And in doing so, there was a direct contact that I had. So that contact is no longer in place. So it brought to my attention then to find a way to better share this information and stay updated in the processes that are happening. And there are some great things happening along that way. We want to talk a little bit tonight about commuter rail, bus rapid transit, and some bus stop amenities. Those things actually, there's been some information shared that has been sort of misguided, in a sense, and misunderstood by some of us. So in that approach to be able to share, we're talking about the long-term goals of public transportation, not just the 22-mile track that's been sort of the overview, but actually some of the key components that it's going to take to help build this system out. One, the operations and maintenance facility that will then house the buses. We are concerned that we have not seen a model of what that actual facility would look like thus far. And we're getting ready to celebrate year four of service with buses in Clayton County. Secondly, the second facility should be a rail, a commuter rail facility, which should be futuristic, meaning that it should have the best of the best coming forth as we are moving into a technical age of transportation. This space also should have administrative offices at the rail yard and also a training facility for all of the career pathways that have been set forth, which specifically in transportation, there are 16 various trades, and all of them have administrative positions down in those. The actual ways that we're constructing our ordinances that could work with the development of this transportation mode is somewhat then of a concern as well. We're needing to make sure that we're positioning ourselves with our ordinances and construction so that this part of MARTA, which is called the actual transportation and development division of it, wherein MARTA has billions of dollars to invest in our communities as far as development is concerned, along transit-oriented development. We want to be sure that we're positioning ourselves based on those ordinances and things that are necessary to be sure that we qualify federally for these developments. We are thus far doing a great job with organizing, training, and development with our citizens along with our neighbors, our five surrounding counties. Great tribute to our central services. We have been doing some great things for years in that in developing a pathway for small business development within the community and the surrounding areas. And we definitely applaud them for all of their efforts in that. We're also, almost four years ago, we also started to coordinate with the schools. In that school effort, we joined the piece of apprenticeship training programs that then have lent us an opportunity to not only structure from an adult perspective where we have the small business development, but we're also able to train our youth into these future developments and career opportunities as well. And just to say a little bit about that, in those 16 skilled trades, that covers almost every aspect of construction completely. And also, the agricultural piece that will go along with that. Right now, Georgia says that they have $73 billion industry, according to the U.S. UGA Center for Agribusiness and Economic Development. So there's plenty of opportunity out there, I'll say. So with that, in closing, on the transportation-oriented development side of this, we just want to keep focused on the small business development, the skilled workforce which helps to train our citizens and get them better prepared, better informed, and we're structuring this around a positive tax revenue for the county as a whole. That's just the periphery of what it is that we were talking about in a sense. Also, with the BRT portion of this specifically, I know that we are moving forward in that. There is some opportunities for us, I think, as far as revenue. If this BRT, which I'm almost certain is going to be, is electric, then maybe we want to be looking towards doing some partnering with Georgia Power to maybe build some solar yards in our county so that way we can sell back some of that power that we will be using and paying for along that system route as well. And just last week in our last meeting, there were some suggestions by the citizens in that meeting about bringing fare, breeze card machines to our library systems as a place where we can start to reload cards in our county. We've been discussing that for quite some time, but our citizens group offered a suggestion of putting those fare machines in our libraries, which is a revenue draw as well.
All right, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Parker. I only have one question before I open up for the rest of the board. Who from MARTA have y'all been working with when it comes to your meetings? Is anybody from MARTA sitting in your meetings with you?
That is correct. Our project manager, Tracy, and we also, there's a consulting group that comes in. That's pretty much it.
Have y'all been speaking with our representatives on the MARTA board?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So do you think we're going to get real?
Yes. But it's going to be, it's probably going to be called BRT, and that will include that commuter rail portion of what it is to be futuristic.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I do have to make a statement. I'm so sorry. Thank you for your presentation. I will say this, one of the things that we do need to keep in mind is that we are blessed that Clayton County was able to get a seat at the table of the ATL Authority. And please understand that moving forward, any build-out of transportation that requires state or federal funding, as I know Mr. Tomlinson stated last week, must go through the authority for prioritization. And so with that, in our last meeting, we were setting forth standards for what is actually BRT. There will no longer be where folks can call something that's a bus rapid transit system. That's not necessarily that. You can do it, but it may not be considered as BRT once it goes through the ATL Authority. So that's one thing to keep in mind. And I do need to make sure that I state that when it is prioritized, BRT will not be prioritized. As rail, it's going to be two separate components. And again, and that is through House Bill 930, and that's based upon the presentation that was given by the Executive Director, Mr. Chris Tomlinson, and the board in which I serve, and now I'm the Vice Chair of the board. So I thank you so very much for your presentation. But we will make sure that you receive the information. And everybody's welcome to go to those meetings. Those meetings are open to the public, and I send them out to you as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just want us to pay very close attention to what's going on with MARTA and with Clayton County. Because I believe that when this passes tonight in Gwinnett, that we're going to be left behind. And I just want us, that's another reason I wanted you to bring to us some information and some of the things that are going on. So I want us to pay very close attention, that we are not left out.
Actually, and what, and I respectfully, Vice Chair, the way that this has been moving forward, we were already in Clayton County, that is. So with most of what is being said is that everything that follows now, the exception of ATL, will go under that guise. But with Clayton County already being in the system, it's not necessarily governed by all of what then the ATL is bringing to the table. So maybe there's some clarity that needs to be made.
I could give you that clarity. The clarity in that is, House Bill 930 is very clear, as you heard. Anything that requires additional state or federal funding, when they have to send that up to the federal government. The reason I wasn't here last week is because I spent more time in D.C. And one of the things that they were clear on is that what's happened in the state of Georgia is that everybody is seeking for federal and state government, and state funding, but they're coming at various projects. So our plans are already folded in. I do get that, and I hear you clearly. Please understand that. Our plans are folded in, but when it comes to the funding, you have to go through a funding source. And that's why you have the ATL Authority and you have the ARC. And so, House Bill 930 has been clear to grant that ability to be able to be the recipient of federal funding. We can have a little bit more of a discussion offline. That's why I asked for Mr. Tomlinson to come and speak. I do agree with Commissioner Hambrick on certain things. I'm keeping my eyes and my ears open because we've got to make sure that we've got everything in order in Clayton County, as you stated, when it comes to our comprehensive planning, making sure our land use is in order, because all of that will be evaluated. And we've got to pay attention to House Bill 511 because House Bill 511 is going to even change some things moving forward. And that's pretty much all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next presentation is a kickoff for the comprehensive plan and the future land use.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I know we have a big agenda tonight, so I won't belabor this presentation. I want to begin by stating that this is the time of the year where we are beginning to update our comprehensive plan. Most of you are familiar with the CUP plan is. Right now, we have a CUP plan that was adopted in 2014. It's referred to as Clayton Forward. The Clayton Forward document was approved by ARC and DCA. This document is a 20-year plan. It was adopted in 2014, but it's a 20-year plan that stretches out to 2034. Right now, we're in 2019, which represents a five-year mark, and this is the time for an update. So we're about, this presentation tonight is a kickoff for a five-year update to the Clayton Forward for our 2019 plan update. Just a little briefly, the purpose of the CUP plan is to, it gives us an opportunity to vision what we want Clayton to look like. We're talking about MARTA, we're talking about growth opportunities. So the CUP plan is an opportunity where we balance our goals along with our needs, and it involves all the stakeholders. It's a big process where all public involvement is very important as we move along, painting this vision and putting in place the goals that we need so that we can obtain a quality community, so that we do have thriving commercial areas, and that we have mixed-use developments that we also desire, and that our industrial communities are sustainable. So that's the purpose of the CUP plan, is to put all of those missions together into a document, and ultimately to produce a plan, and more visually, is a plan map that maps out how the county should be developing. So moving forward, it's very important why we have to participate in this process. First of all, it's a requirement by the Georgia State Planning Act that all jurisdictions do a CUP, do, or refer to as a CUP plan, and we're required to update it every five years because it's a 20-year plan. So things happen, like MARTA's coming aboard right now. Well, at least, we have more, we have visions of having MARTA closer to reality than before. So now, as Commissioner Hambrick stated, our land use map now needs to represent those areas, and we need to address that in our CUP plan. The CUP plan also is a state mission. It says that the state is an attractive place. People will come to the state and invest because our land use is predictable. We know where to go where a certain type of development is invited. And also, it's, we receive what we refer to as a qualified local government certification, which means, once we're qualified, we can apply to ARC and other state funding for different grants, like the LIC grants. So it's very important that we do this update. The, we refer to, the most common thing that you think about in the CUP plan is the FLOOM. The FLOOM is what we refer to as a future land use map. What the future land use map does is it lays out the development pattern for the county. We deal with zoning matters every day, like tonight, we're dealing with zoning matters. But all these zoning matters are based on the premises of some conceived plan as to how the county should develop in terms of the densities of the residential developments, where industries should be occurring, where mixed-use should be occurring. That's what the CUP plan does, the future land use map. So as we engage in this process, the public involvement element is going to be very important in having the public give input in terms of what their visions are for their community and how this map takes shape in the new update. The, again, a lot of things that are on the citizen's mind is parks, more access to parks, more walking trails, public transit. These are things that are high priority, and these are the type of things that we'll begin to address in the plan update. The, one important factor of the plan update is formalizing a steering committee. We'll be putting together a steering committee. The steering committee is a major force in this process because they are, it's an organized body that will kind of act as a leadership group as we move through the process. This group of people will be, will come from all facets of the community. It'll involve residents, elected and appointed officials, property owners, business owners, community organizations, educational institutions, government staff and entities. This steering committee will make up of these different types of disciplines so that you'll have a conduit to transfer information from the community back to the planning department so that we begin to take shape of what the goals and visions are for the community. The public involvement process, as we talked about, will be very engaging. The community outreach will be, will involve all four districts. We'll be going out to the community at locations that are convenient to the community and holding these public outreach meetings. We'll keep information posted on the website. We'll continue to update as we go through the process, the type of comments that we're receiving. We'll put that information out on the website. We have community questionnaires floating through the community. We'll have flyers, we'll do news publications, social media. So we're going to keep the engagement, and we'll be soliciting for the public to get involved and to attend these meetings. Because again, the whole idea about making this update is to have a very active public involvement process. And I will add that we are partnering with ARC to do all this effort. So ARC will be working hand-in-hand with us as we go about the public outreach and involving the community and making this update. Just to give you an idea of the time engaged with this process, starting now with the kickoff in March, the first process we'll be doing, we'll be gathering research and establishing our steering committee. So you'll be hearing from us in the next few weeks and making some recommendations for persons to form this steering committee. Then, as we go into the month of June, we'll begin, we'll hopefully, we'll be very actively going out to the community, having these outreach meetings. So again, stay in tune to the websites, flyers, be observant so that you could be involved. We'll do every effort we can to make notifications, to organize groups so that the word can spread. And as we go into the fall of the year, we begin to finalize all the comments that we've received from the community and put those in a planned draft. When all that information is drafted, map updates are done, that information is sent back to ARC and DCA for their review and approval. Hopefully, everything would go as smooth as silk. By the December, we'll have approved plan, and in January, we'll be adopting the 2019 update to the CUP plan. So again, the next time we talk again, I'll be asking for recommendations so that we can form our steering committee. And by that time, we'll have a schedule out so that we'll know when you'll be in your different districts so that we'll know how to involve the citizens. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the panel?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Can you clarify for me real quick, because you mentioned "we" and "us." I want to make sure I understand, because I participated in this five years ago, but it was conducted by the collaborative firm. So when you say "we" or "us," is it the staff of Clayton County? Or is it you working on behalf of the collaborative firm?
Right, the Community Development Staff Department will be partnering with ARC. We will be conducting the full draft public involvement and producing the CUP plan for the update.
Okay, so the Community Development Staff, that's under Mr. Jiki?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not you, because you're still working with the collaborative firm.
Well, no, no.
No, you're with us now.
I'm now.
All right, with us now. I got you.
Yeah, so I'm with the Community Development Department, so I'll be taking a very strong lead in that plan update.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation, ma'am.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Before I call the names, I'm going to ask the board to, I need to make an amendment to the agenda. I need, I've been asked to remove item D. I need, I've been asked to remove Item D. That's recommendation for award ITB 18-21 vending machines, uh, vending machine services. They need to make some changes to the contract. Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. Those in favor, I.
All right.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Also, before I call the first name, a couple of announcements. This month, we're celebrating Women's History Month. Let's give all our women a round of applause, please. Also, congratulations go out to our seniors at our Charlie Griswell Senior Center for being the Cultural Programs Award winner for their Open Mic of Poetry Slam event, which was awarded by the National Council of Aging. Our seniors rock, so let's see. Also, Jonesboro High School Mock Trial Team won state during the trial. And I think that's it for the moment, so we're good. All right, first one up is Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Virtually all of our Clayton County citizens who express and verbalize their desire to serve on our Clayton County Citizens Boards are more than qualified and deserving. But the only Clayton County citizens that you want on your Clayton County Citizens Boards are those citizens who you all have personally identified, recognized, and given your stamp of approval because these Clayton County citizens are in total agreement, lockstep, and approve of everything that all five of you are doing and are totally okay with every decision that you make, whether or not it is in the best interest of Clayton County and its citizens. And these loyal, dedicated, dutiful, steadfast, trustworthy, cooperative in every way, super-duper and true-blue Clayton County citizens who are, in your own words, super-positive ambassadors of Clayton County and will always follow to the letter without question your Clayton County Board of Commissioners Commissioned Corporate Company line that says that all is right and just great in Clayton County with nothing wrong at all, period, and that also that Clayton County has no problems, issues, or concerns. They need addressing, fixing, or correcting. These Clayton County citizens, even if they have concerns with some of the decisions that you're presently making and are not making, would dare not speak out publicly in a public forum like these public comment sessions or let their voices be heard lest they lose their super-favorite welcoming, okay, friendly status with all five of you and move from your good graces and your good side to your unfriendly, unwelcome, and unfavorable, mean, and hostile side of disapproval, displeasure, and dislike. We all know that your flawed Clayton County Citizens Board selection process will not be changed for the better because your prejudice and bias board selection system process suits you all just fine and works to your advantage, favor, benefit, and pleasure, and works to the detriment, disadvantage, and disservice against other Clayton County citizens who are equally deserving but will not have the chance because of your success in shutting out, excluding, denying, and keeping off your citizens' boards. The Clayton County citizens you have deemed an annoyance, bother, irritant, nuisance, and not worthy for your consideration and nomination, period, to be on any Clayton County Citizens Board now and Clayton County's immediate future. In concluding my public commenting on your flawed, half-hazard, unprincipled prejudice, bias, and totally subjective citizens' board process where you have no formal structure, process, protocols, best practices, or established procedures in place, or even have in place a formal Clayton County Citizens Board Committee that will accept the names of qualified Clayton County citizens who express their desire to serve on our Clayton County Citizens Board, I have come to the realization and final conclusion that all five of you, our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, will not at no time soon or ever will devise, conceive, or come up with an objective and fair process that would ensure or even protect your integrity, honesty, trustworthiness, character, professionalism, and credibility in this matter. My public commenting on this matter is now concluded.
Woody Smith.
Thank you. Twenty, thirty, forty years ago, when most of the houses-
Need you to state your name and your residence.
Oh, I'm sorry. Woodrow Smith. Uh, my address is 13846 Panhandle Lane, Hampton, Georgia. Not too far away from-
And before you start, sir, are you addressing a public comment or you want to speak in reference to a zoning hearing, which we will hear later?
Both.
Okay, please proceed.
Twenty, thirty, forty years ago, when the houses built in this area, uh, didn't have any water or sewage or anything else, we had to put it in ourselves. There was no city water for any of us. That whole burden was put on our shoulders and at our expense. We drive further than most people go to work, you know, as far as we pay more for gas, we take more time to get to Atlanta, this, that, and the other. We do it because we want to live in that part of the county. We enjoy the forest preserve area that it was set up to be, you know, so to speak, which brings us to the expense of this new spot development that's coming into our area. It's, uh, it's gonna cost X amount of dollars to widen the roads, put in new schools, fire and police protection, to say nothing of a whole new school that we need down there with the additional people coming up. This burden is all on the taxpayer. We should have impact fees in this county. We have counties very close to us. We have states that are totally impact, have fees at all, two of which around us right here in Alphaville. Three thousand dollars a household on a house going in. In, in Spalding County, it's sixteen hundred and sixty dollars, and so is Henry County for impact fees that would defray the cost of what we're getting thrown on our shoulders. The fault of all these things are, should be on the people that are benefiting from it. The people that are buying the houses, the builders that are building it, the developer who's developing the land. Let them pay some of the freight. Why should it all become just on us? We need better police, we need better fire, and we need better schools in that whole area. There's gonna be that many more people out there. And with other zoning issues that are coming up further to the south, it's gonna get even worse. If you're thinking you're doing us a favor by pumping up the number of houses we have in there for tax revenue, or for business ventures, or to pad your resumes, you're bringing all this into our area. The Land Use Act was not to have that. It was one house per acre. It's not gonna be that anymore. We're not against having houses down there, but not two, three, and four on an acre. Make it fair, one house per acre. That's what it should be. Very simple. I hope you listen to a lot of the comments that are gonna be made here in the future. You know, it's, it's all about the investigation of what is going to happen because of it.
Your time is up, sir.
All right, I'll finish it in a second.
Brandy Repo- Repapo? Brandy? R-E, looks like R-E-P-P-O-L-D, maybe? Brandy? Who? Buddy, yes. Buddy.
Did try.
I did try. Buddy. Come on forward, buddy.
Yes, sir.
What am I here for?
Obviously, you're the wrong buddy.
There's only one Buddy Rappold.
What's your last name, sir?
Yeah, I can assure you of that.
Did you sign up to speak?
Oh, I signed, yes, sir.
Would you like to speak?
Oh, no, I didn't, I thought that was a deciding sheet. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, you can have a seat.
I apologize.
Not a problem.
Can I ask a question? Ask a quick question?
Mickey Garber.
Mr. Chair, we're very busy tonight, and I respectfully yield the floor to the next speaker.
Thank you, sir. Marsor. Marsor. Only have one name, Marsor. You yield two? All right, all right, sir, thank you. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. After the March 4th B.O.C.C. meeting, Commissioner Davis said, "I don't agree with your comments about Superintendent Dr. Beasley. I would suggest you watch the Board of Education meeting the day before March 4th and listen carefully to the first two speakers. Their comments were truthful and fact-based." The first speaker started at 22:36. Suwani Jean Pierre. After she finished, Dr. Beasley said, "Please refer to me as Superintendent Dr. Maurice Beasley." Didn't address anything she said. The second speaker was at 26 minutes, Jean Atanya. "After watching the Board of Ed meeting, tell me what part of truth or facts you don't agree with. They made my comments sound like a compliment. There were several reasons why I spoke on March the 5th. First, at the retreat, Dr. Beasley was asked, 'Where are we since our decertification?' His response? 'What happened 10 years ago, I don't discuss. I only look towards the future.' The question was the present. We know why, grade D." Second, he said, he was asked all the time, "What are you gonna do about the education problem in Clayton County?" He said, "It's not a Dr. Beasley problem. That sounds like a lack of accountability to me." Third, Dr. Beasley gave a statewide report card. You ready? Okay. Fayette County, 87, Gwinnett, 83, Fulton County, 81, Rockdale, 68, Henry County, 66, Clayton County, 65. Percent of college degrees? The Cal, 42 percent; Cobb, 45 percent; Clayton County, 19 percent. Chairman Turner. In your state of the county, did you actually say Clayton County schools are not failing? You owe Mr. Farmer an apology because Dr. Beasley confirmed his numbers. Let me apologize. The article in the Clayton County Daily said Dr. Beasley's total salary is $380,000 a year. So, if you extrapolate those numbers out, after four years, we will have paid $1,520,000 just to get to a grade C. Dr. Beasley also said, "The Board of Ethics has no jurisdiction over me. His arrogance is exceeded only by the incompetence of the Board of Education. Someone, please tell the Emperor he has no clothes."
Mr. Gooden, let me correct you on one point. On the state of, on the state of the county address, I said there are no schools on the failing list, on the governor's failing list.
I didn't get my invitation. It was supposed to be a VIP invitation.
Oh, I must have, yeah, I must have forgot to send that one to you. But there are no school, Clayton County schools on the governor's list of failing schools.
On the governor's list, but you asked Mr. Farmer-
Last of the state.
Where did he, remember you asked him, "Did you vet your information? Where did you get it?" And what did he say? Off the website. Then Dr. Beasley got up here and gave those numbers. 65 is not passing unless you great, grading on a curve. Thank you. Oh, by the way, if you haven't looked at my magazine, Time to Shine, I want it back.
Latresa Fryson. Latresa.
Hey, so I am here on the zoning issue for Victoria Metals, and I can hold that comment till later.
Yes, okay, for the hearing. Thank you, ma'am. Ed Hicks. Ed Hicks.
Good evening, uh, my name is, uh, Ed Hicks. I live at, uh, 14605 Wildwood Road, Hampton, Georgia. I live right at the end of the county. Uh, last summer, uh, my wife and I noticed a tree across from our property. It sort of resembles a leaning tower pizza. And, uh, my wife got sick, and we sort of lost track of it. We're coming up on number 50, and I want her to keep her, keep her with me as long as I can. So, we spent a lot of time at the hospital and the doctor. But I asked my tree guy to take a look at it. Uh, the roots are starting to come up through the pavement in the road. Uh, and it's leaning a little more than it was. Across the street, the, uh, Water Authority has its testing station. We're, we're right at the end of the water line. So, they have a, sort of an elaborate testing station there. They have a hydrant and all that. If it takes the wrong direction, it'll take all that out. The road is sort of a commuter road for Spalding County people. We get a lot of traffic coming back and forth. And I sure would hate to see anybody be under that tree when it decides to come down. So, that, that's why I'm here. I was gonna do this, uh, before my wife got sick and I didn't get around to it, so. So, if y'all could take another look, uh, we had called Mrs. Warner's, Commissioner Warner's office, uh, and the, uh, transportation people, but we never really got a response. So, it is, it looks like a dangerous tree to me, so if y'all could please take a look so we don't have any tragedy here.
Yeah, we'd definitely send somebody out, take another look at that, sir.
Yes, can we back, Mr. Hicks? Mr. Hicks? Mr. Hicks? Um, let's just verify your number. I do need to say this, um, and with our T, our IT person here today, I do apologize because I did find out today, and I spoke to someone else, that, um, there was something with the, um, the, uh, the phone that should be forwarded to me and it wasn't. So, I do honestly apologize. But he said that he's gonna fix that, I promise you, in all honesty. So, let's double-check that. Your number's correct.
Kathy Williams.
Kathy Williams, Ellenwood, Georgia. I'd just like to say, as you commissioners talk about this comprehensive planning and stuff that's going on, please be very mindful that there's a lot of residents that are being very heavily impacted with warehouses and stuff. Uh, I know there's a lot of things on the agenda tonight regarding the warehouse problems. I'd like to see Clayton County be something more than just a whole lot of warehouses. I'd like to see where, I'd like to see Clayton County like it was when it was, when I call it's prime payday. So, as you're considering different things tonight, please be mindful of the residents in the area, and let's try to keep these trucks off the roads. Thank you.
Cheryl Jackson. Cheryl Jackson.
Cheryl Jackson, Rex, Georgia. I would just like to speak about the warehouses in the Ellenwood Anvil Block area. If you don't travel Anvil Block, borrow your neighbor's car 'cause you don't want to take yours down there. The potholes are now manholes. You can literally lose your car in one. I saw a bumper sticker that says, "No, I'm not drunk, I'm dodging potholes." What the area needs is what was promised, live, work, and play. We have empty warehouses, Fort Gillum. There's enough warehouses and places. We'd just like to keep our community non-industrial. Thank you.
Michael Mostel.
Uh, Michael Mostel, Clayton County, Georgia. I would like just to echo what, uh, Cheryl and Kathy just said. Thank you.
Lonnie Hinton. Lonnie Hinton.
Lieutenant Chairman, Vice Chairman of the Commission, my name is Lonnie Hinton, I live at eight-four-two-four Members Drive, Jonesboro, Georgia. My concern is reference to the new software that the county purchased for the senior to do registration for class and events. Uh, the first turn up, put out was, uh, last year in December seventeen. On that, I knew we were gonna have bugs in that process, but my concern is, uh, on that date, when I checked my account, they charged me twice for the class. Did my paperwork, I made copies, took it to the senior center, they took it in, so I waited a month. On the seventeen, on January the thirtieth, before I signed for the second term, account would have not been put back. So talked to the, uh, the center again, they went back. It is its third term, it is now nineteen March. I still have not got my refund for my account, and I just signed up for a third term. Somehow they send the administrations on my side. Uh, I don't see how that can be when they got so how can, I'm, I'm not the bank, so how can it be administration on my side when all I have to do is just look at the same account and put the fund back in my account? So I wish if somebody can just look into that new software. Uh, I found out, I'm not the only one, but I'm the only one to come to the commission to talk to you all about it. I know a lot of bugs, probably been practiced and, but we never got a chance to go into it and see, get the bugs out before they just put out the new procedure. But I just wish there, somehow that we can just look at that, make it a little better. Bug's still not out, I found out some people out there for three or four hours yesterday, still trying to sign up. For me, I signed up real easy this mo, uh, yesterday morning, but it's still, I'm talking that whole, that accounting, not just for myself.
And let me say this, and I appreciate your comments, I have heard from several seniors that there is a, a issue, a problem, and we recognize that, and we are actively trying to do something about it, we are gonna do something about it, and we're trying to get it done expeditiously as possible, but we gotta make sure that when we fix it, we fix it right and we don't have this problem again, so I appreciate your comments.
I was just gonna say, thank you, Mr. Hinton, you should've just texted me, I would've got you your money, but. That's my dad.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board would now consider the consent agenda.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, what was your last comment? I missed it, I'm sorry.
It said, "The board would now consider the consent agenda."
All right, is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those who favor I.
Aye.
Oh, question, any questions before we approve? Yes, ma'am?
Uh, yes, under Q. With the livable communities, who's gonna be in charge of that? Twenty-nineteen thirty-nine.
I believe that's a community development, uh. Miss C O, Miss Stanford, does that fall under community development?
No, sir.
Who's applying for the grant, the L C I grant?
Trying to find the support chairman, I want to say.
Let me make sure, I see a, is it saying that we're just applying for the grant, we have not been issued the grant?
It still has to come from a department, though.
Right.
So what department is applying for the grant?
Chuck, it's item Q, resolution twenty-nineteen thirty-nine.
Can I T check to see who submitted it in the minute?
Uh, when we, when we find out, uh, this will go coincide with what Mr. Parker was telling us regarding the, uh, rail, the commuter rail, and all that, we have to have, uh, communities and livable spaces close to that rail, that's what I want to say, I just hope that whoever's doing this will honor that.
The L C I grant, this is the twenty thousand match that we have, the hundred thousand is the trail development, so it's a combination of parks and recreation and working in conjunction with A R C on it. But it's parks and recreation.
So it's parks and rail?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Here are none, those who favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, issue unanimous.
That ends the consent agenda, the first item would be item E, which was removed to the regular agenda, and it is a recommendation for award, R F P eighteen dash one sixty-six, real estate broker services for Clayton County.
Ms. Rogers.
Evening Chairman Commissioners. Recommendation for award is for R F P eighteen dash one sixty-six, which is real estate broker services for Clayton County. The recommendation is to award to the responsive and responsible proponent, whose proposal is determined to be, to meet the specifications. The vendor is the Real Estate Gallery of Georgia LLC, located in Fayetteville, Georgia. This is a revenue-generated contract. The proponent will receive a six percent sales commission residential rate and an eight percent sales commission commercial rate. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman he has designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the CFO to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? Are there motions, is there a second? Is there a second? All right, the motion dies due to a lack of a second.
The next item is item K, operations analyst. This is presented on behalf of the Chief Operation Officer. Human Resources is requesting to add an operation analyst, step, grade thirty-four, step one.
Miss C O. Before he makes any comments or answers any questions that anyone might, might have, uh, this position I asked to be created, and I worked with the COO to draft the language on it. We're basically looking for somebody to help with the efficiencies of the department and to make sure that timelines are met. And, uh, basically, the departments are, we can use, uh, benchmarks to make sure our departments are going in the direction and fulfilling the, uh, vision of the, of the Board of Commissioners as well as the citizens. Anybody have any questions for Miss C O?
Um, well, it's, it's not a question, really, it's, it's a statement. We are in the budgeting season. And there have been other departments that have come forward. I think building and maintenance had a whole plan that was, I mean, a great plan, but because we are in the budgeting season, and I don't see this as an emergency, maybe it is, that I think we should wait and do it during the budgeting process. And I, I don't know that it's civil service, but I would recommend that we not have it as a civil, civil service position.
Yes, ma'am. So a couple of things, so the position, um, it hadn't been deemed as a civil service protective position. Uh, we're utilizing the funding source from the vacated Deputy COO's position, um, so it's no new budget, it won't have any budgetary impact. Matter of fact, this position would be out of savings. Um, I believe that Deputy COO's position was at a pay grade thirty-eight.
It's about sixteen thousand dollar savings.
Right, and this position's at a thirty-four. So we're ensuring that the request came to the board as a budget-neutral position, since we would not be asking for new dollars. Um, reason why we're asking for it to come forth, um, now opposed to the budget process, the idea is to onboard the candidate prior to the budget cycle, since they will be analyzing the new fiscal year, um, to make sure they can align the board's goals from the retreat, as well as have an opportunity to do an assessment of the, the key performance indicators from each of the respective departments. The idea was to try to have that individual in space prior to the new, uh, adoption of the board, of the budget, which would be July one.
Okay, so you're saying it's not gonna be a civil service position?
It, it doesn't, no, ma'am, we can, position doesn't have to be a civil service protective position, it can be an at-will position.
Okay, well, since it's budget-neutral and it's not civil service, then I don't have a problem with it.
What is the actual salary?
Um, I believe the starting salary is eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand. Any other questions?
I think you have it, um, in the write-up as grade something.
Thirty-four one.
As it is, I mean, that's considered under civil service, I thought.
The, the grades doesn't dictate whether or not it's civil service protected, it's just given the grades.
Well, as long as it's not civil service and it is budget-neutral.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's not gonna affect our bottom line, then I'm, I'm okay with it.
Commissioner Gregory, you have something?
No, we have to run.
Okay, I thought you had.
Only thing I want to add is, I, I just want to make sure that we focus on processes. As we hear people have concerns, we've had computer issues out the Wahoo. Um, and since I've been on the board in the last two years, a lot of times if you ask why things are done a certain way, well, that's why it's always been done. So where I do concur that I wish that we, you know, that, as you mentioned, um, going into the budget cycle, but what's happening for me right now, and my concern is that we're spending a lot of time, energy on processes that may not be as effective. And so I'm really hoping that we seek somebody to be in this role that's going to focus on the processes as we move into the budget cycle. That's really my concern.
Any other questions? All right, here are none, those who favor I.
Aye.
Oppose.
Wait a minute, do we have a motion?
I don't have a motion. Did so much talking, I thought we had a motion.
No, because you started.
Yes, ma'am, you correct, you correct, we started. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here are none, those who favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, issue unanimous.
The next item is R A, resolution twenty-nineteen dash forty.
Resolution nineteen, uh, dash forty is a resolution, first of all, good evening, everyone. Resolution nineteen, uh, dash forty is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to close the Clayton County Library Headquarters and all branches for upgrades to technology system on certain days, to authorize the Clayton County Library System to perform all. It should be to authorize the chief, uh, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution. I, I apologize, no, to authorize the, Clayton County Library System first, to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective aid to this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion? All right, item dies due to the lack of a motion. Next.
Next are the zoning hearings. The first one is applicant Eric Robinson is requesting to rezone from Article Three, Section three-point-two-four Urban Village, District to Article Seven, Planned Unit Development, to develop sixty-three residential dwellings within the Spivey Club subdivision located near Lake Spivey, Georgia. This is in Commissioner Davis's District Four.
Mr. Robinson, good evening. Got the floor?
So, yeah, we're looking to change the zoning on these lots to finish the neighborhood out. Only thing I know that I need to address.
State your name.
Eric Robinson.
In your state residence.
And your, and your residence.
In Jonesboro, Georgia. Jonesboro, Georgia. Subdivision was half-built several years back, trying to finish it off. The, uh, only thing that I really have to discuss further than, uh, what I think is aware is, uh, the proposed conditions that we were adding to the lots. Do you have that? Kind of small, but, um, I have some extra copies, if it'd be better to hand that out to the commissioners.
No, we have it on our screen.
Okay, okay. So on number two of this list, um, we were trying to add on no vinyl siding except, with exceptions of eaves and soffits, which is consistent with phase one. On number four, um, two-car garages with front home entry. And on number seven, it says, uh, fifteen-foot side yard setbacks, but the language should read, uh, minimum building separation. On number nine, um, it says houses will be a minimum of twenty-one hundred square feet, the neighborhood requested twenty-three hundred square feet.
Twenty what?
Twenty-three hundred, instead of twenty-one, so an increase. Um, and then number ten, to be removed. With the home staggering, it's not consistent with the, uh, beginning of the subdivision. And on number twenty, having that removed because it's a violation of the neighborhood H O A on phase one. Outside of that, I'm not sure if there's any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board right now, from, from Mr. Robinson?
Actually, I'd like to hear from, tell us what your issues were.
I want to update, this subdivision is a phase two of the Spivey, uh, Spivey Club subdivision. Uh, sixty-three lots are being, are being planned. The condition that you, that you, that you flashed on the board there are the conditions that were approved for phase one. The planning commission, sorry, ZAG, or recommended approval of the P U D zone with the, uh, the twenty-two conditions that we just looked at. Mr. Robinson stating that he has different, he has alternative suggestions for at least, uh, six of the, uh, the question. Conditions that the board would have to entertain, whether or not they wanted to address any changes based on the suggestion or whether or not we accept the conditions that were recommended by the, by the.
Is the plaque, is the plaque current for what we were talking about, discussing earlier?
The, uh, the plan that we have before you now is reflective of what was approved in its original form when there was a subdivision of the Spivey subdivision. If you can see on the board there, there's a yellow highlight running around the sixty-three lots. Those sixty-three lots represent the area of phase two that's planned for development now under the P U D development. Under the P U D development, the, um, the, this is the development plan that was admitted, however, there are some things that need to be highlighted, uh, when he comes back for the preliminary planning process. What happens in this process is that first we address the zoning on the P U D, then they have to, we have to go through a full, uh, technical review process through the planning process to make sure that whatever is proposed, that it meets all of the technical requirements of the, of the subdivision rates and the development code. So yes, when I completed that process, that the process over there is merely to rezone the property to P U D, and that, and when we find some subdivision, we'll address all the developer status.
And so what he just talked about as far as the, uh, those twenty points or twenty-four points, those will be addressed in the technical review as well?
No, the twenty-two conditions are the conditions that were recommended by, by ZAG, and they also the conditions that are now in place on the first phase of the development. The, uh, the conditions that were highlighted tonight by Mr. Robinson are conditions that he has, that he thinks are contrary to what the development, that he has in mind. So we would, on tonight, need to, to address whether or not we were making any changes to those twenty-two conditions or whether or not we would accept the conditions of the development. So he indicated that the one condition was no vinyl siding permitted. Uh, he indicated that there will be some vinyl siding on some, on some structures, so the decision for us tonight is whether or not we want to change that condition. Uh, he referenced the conditions that all homes have a minimum two-car garage, that's pretty much a standard requirement that generates all the.
We're just having the front entry on those.
Okay, all right, then the, uh, the change for number two, you requesting that. that, that it be front entry.
That's correct.
Okay. I think what the condition states is just a minimum two-car garage and a carriage stop, so you would be consistent with that.
Right.
Okay. The fifteen-foot side yard setback.
Can we go back to that slide?
So, because again, I just have like, you, you address condition number two, that's the, uh, no vinyl siding permitted, that's what he, uh, Mr. Robinson objected to that condition. Condition number four requires two-car garages, that should not be an issue because the code requires two-car garages anyway, does not specify that it has to be side entry. The, um, next condition, the condition number seven, that addresses fifteen-foot side yard setbacks, that's what was conditioned on, on the first phase, and the question, and Mr. Robinson...
I don't think number seven was on the first phase.
He's indicated that, uh, the fifteen-foot side yard setback is problematic for his planned proposal.
So, can we, can check that setback on Phase One to make sure it's consistent with what he's proposing?
Yes, because we've been, we've been... The, the way it was expressed right now is that the fifteen-foot side yard setback would be from the property line. What Mr. Robinson indicated tonight is that he could provide a fifteen-foot separation between, between dwellings, but not a setback to the side yard. The fifteen-foot separation, that, that is what, that is the requirement on the first phase. The fifteen-foot side yard setback is merely, it came about because it's a recent change to the, uh, zone code. So, I concur with Mr. Robinson that the fifteen-foot separation is what's required in the first phase, and not actually a setback as what it is. The, uh, condition number ten, it asks for the homes to have a staggering effect of three feet along the frontage. This is really a design requirement, uh, other boards address that, whether or not that's an issue or not.
You skipped nine.
Uh, no, yeah, I'm sorry, number nine, yeah, number nine was also addressed. The, uh, homes on the first phase understand are minimum of twenty-three hundred square feet, and he's willing to be consistent with the homes on the first phase, so we would, uh, recommend to change this to one hundred and twenty-three. Change to twenty-three. That, 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 that. The final condition that you stated that was problematic was the condition number twenty, uh, as you refer to the decorative fencing. I, I would bring that up to the board, whether or not we need to address that.
Well, I think he said that was against the homeowners association rules.
That's correct.
Do you have a copy of those HOAs?
Uh, I can email you one.
Please.
Yes.
Do you have any other questions?
I'm trying to. Now, there was an issue with legal, I believe.
Well, we, we talked about the, uh, the issue of, of having the PUD to meet all the development plan requirements of the, uh, zone code, which goes to subdivision rates. So, the, the PUD requirement automatically requires, automatically requires this, uh, this to go back through the subdivision process. So, again, we are only addressing the rezoning as a PUD. So, we, as we discussed, uh, as an option, is that the PUD, that the PUD zoning would have to be referred back to the ZAG so that the planning of the subdivision would be all the code requirements as it relates to the code requirements. And the issue of the, uh, open space would be, would be addressed, uh, and would be, would be addressed, uh, as part of the overall golf, golf area that was part of the original plan. So, basically what we're saying is that the subdivision proposal, as originally came in, came in as a conservation subdivision, incorporated all the open space surrounding developments. But now that we didn't, we have isolated, uh, Phase Two, the open space now is somewhat, is, is somewhat disconnected, even though it's adjacent, is disconnected from the boundary. So, going through the subdivision process, we'll be able to, uh, calculate the open space, uh, for the, and make sure that the plan and the development, as, as required by the code, that the subdivision needs all those specifications.
Okay, and I understand what we're trying to accomplish with the twenty percent, but with the golf course, we've got the, uh, trail, close proximity, close proximity there. We also have the new rec center, as well as the beach facility going up. That might be something else. Is Mr. Hancock available?
Sure.
Yes. Is there a way that, um, we can move forward with this while allowing him to go through the technical review process?
Yes, sir, he's got to go through the technical review process.
We're making a contingent on it.
I'm sorry.
Correct, contingent on it, yes.
Contingent. You can approve the PUD, deal with the conditions, either accept or reject, however you want to deal with the conditions, approve the PUD zoning, that approval would be contingent upon completion of the technical review process, submission of a revised plat, plat, and all of those issues would be addressed at the time that that was done.
Okay. So, question, can I make a motion for that?
No, not yet. All right, so this is a public hearing, so is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against this request? Anybody like to speak for or against the request? Come for us, sir.
I'm sure this is all very important, but I couldn't hear a word she said, but it sounded like it was very important, so.
Anybody else like to speak for or against? Anybody else?
Let's talk.
Come for us, sir.
Just the Lonnie Hinton.
Can we turn that off?
Please, let's, let's, let's keep down, down the chatter.
Look, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Members, Commissioners, my name is Lonnie Hinton, I live in that subdivision. Uh, like the gentleman said, I just need some clarification, 'cause I could not hear back there. We had, the last, when we went to the, uh, commission meeting, they denied the request from the committee, but the ZAG recommended approval with the condition of those twenty-some stipulation. So, I couldn't hear back there, so are we removing any other stipulation that were put on there?
The applicant, that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, I apologize, I apologize, my mic was out and I did not realize it.
Can we hear now? Can you hear now?
Hopefully this mic is, uh, better, not better?
Take, take the podium, ma'am.
Again, I apologize for not being heard. Yes, on the board, we have twenty-two conditions. Those twenty-two conditions were, were agreed upon as, and approved on Phase One. Now, we're undertaking Phase Two. Mr. Robinson has stated that there are, there are at least five condi-, six conditions that are on the board now that he cannot adhere to or will not fit appropriately in Phase Two. Those conditions are, the, the condition number two, no vinyl siding permitted. There was an objection to that condition. There's an objection to, uh, he stated an objection to the two-car garage being permitted as side entry. That's not an issue because the, the code, the conditions only require, uh, two-car garages, which is a regular code requirement at any rate. The fifteen-foot side yard setback that's in the conditions, Mr. Robinson indicated that he could provide a fifteen-foot separation between dwellings and not actually a setback from the property line. The other, uh, condition addressed was condition number nine. Condition number nine states that minimum house size would be twenty-one hundred square feet. He stated that he, he agrees to twenty-three hundred square feet because it'll be more consistent with what's approved on the first phase. Condition number ten states that the homes, the homes should be staggered by three feet along the front building line. He stated that that was not, that that was problematic in the way the subdivision was laid out, so he did not want to adhere to that condition. Condition number twenty requires a decorative, a decorative fencing at the, um, at the property entrance to the golf course. He stated, stated that that was not complateable because the covenants prohibited that. So, out of the twenty-two conditions, there are five conditions that Mr. Robinson objects to.
What, what does it state, well, I guess, what's in place right now with the vinyl siding?
Yeah, no vinyl, we don't have any vinyl siding in our subdivision, none at all.
Okay.
It's on the eaves and soffit, no siding. They got it on the eaves.
Well, that's what he said.
Right.
Clarify that point for...
But, that's what I wanted to understand, you talking about?
So, you just...
No, it's just on the, uh, just on the eaves and soffit.
Okay. But not on the house?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Span, can we, can we put that in there so we, people are knowledgeable of that?
Yes, we can clarify that. The condition says no vinyl siding, so that would really, uh, be, be addressing the sidewalls, but we can clarify the language there that it's, uh, that it's only intended for eaves and soffits and not for the, uh, finished sides of the exterior structure.
That's what we discussed with no, but we didn't, I noticed we said no vinyl. Right. So, unless anybody else with my subdivision.
Sir, you gotta dress, dress us, please.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I got carried away there.
Did you have anything else?
I thought about, uh, another position I hose. I'm sorry, I apologize to your advice. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak for or against? All right, Commissioner Davis.
I have one question before you go there, though, because it's not just pertaining to this subdivision, um, per se, but I've been having discussions with, um, regarding this fifteen-foot, um, yard, um, you know, in between. And so, the thing is, this was put in at the end of the year last year, but it's my understanding that it causes for a different look of the house if we do adhere to that. So, if the other homes were not built with that, how is that gonna change things? And it's really more, it deals with this, but it's something we're dealing with throughout the county, 'cause this was just put in place.
That's correct. During the, uh, December comprehensive text package, uh, there was a, uh, text amendment in there that required the R S one-eight and R S one-ten developments to have a fifteen-foot setback from the property line. So, yes, that's different from what some of the earlier subdivisions would develop under the code. Prior to that, stated that they only needed to concrete, only needed to maintain a twenty-foot separation, that's in the R S one-ten and R S one-eighty. In this subdivision, we're dealing with the conservation subdivision, where the lots were a little bit more clustered, so the first phase only had a requirement of fifteen feet between structures and not fifteen feet between setbacks, because a fifteen-foot setback would mean you would have thirty feet between structures.
Mm-hmm.
Since this is still a cluster style development similar to the first phase, he's requesting that he maintain that fifteen-foot separation rather than setback.
Mm-hmm.
He's trying to keep the consistent.
Keep it consistent, I get it.
Uh, Ms. Davis, hold on a second. Yes, ma'am.
Margaret Slaughter, I live in the, um, Lake Spivey, I'm sorry, in the Spivey subdivision, um, Chairman Turner. Uh, I don't have, uh, an objection to the, um, to the development of the subdivision, but the consistency, I mean, I was confused back there, too, with the vinyl siding, I'm, I'm not sure, um...
Just on the area on the weekends.
Okay, and that's what we have, we have that on the homes already.
Yes, ma'am.
So, as long as we are in agreement that we would be stipulations, then I don't have a disagreement.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Commissioner Davis.
So, you will be getting a copy of the HOAs to Ms. Span, correct?
Sure.
So, we can basically make sure they're consistent. Um, Mr. Hancock, I'm gonna need some help on how to make this motion.
Do you want to change, address the five, let's address the five, uh, recommendations that he either does not agree with.
Look, will we, I'm sorry? Okay, go Jack, yes.
Commissioner, if it is your desire to approve the, uh, the rezoning to the PUD, uh, subject to the submission of a final plat and the submission and approval of a final plat, uh, and also adopting the stipulations, uh, that, that have been agreed to by the hall, by, uh, Mr. Robinson, uh, then that would be your motion.
So moved.
If you want to, if, if you're not in agreement with any of those stipulations.
No, that, that's actually, but, but also, let's put a, let's put a, a, a timeframe on that as well.
Okay, um, six months?
Six months. Would that be sufficient?
For eliminated class, yeah.
For you to go through that process.
Okay. Ms. Span, I think you need to go through those items, so we, for clarification purposes, those five items that, uh, were discussed, as to what the final decision on those items are.
Yes, we'll be clarifying condition number two, to state that the, uh, no vinyl siding...
You can't hear.
Sorry, bad mic.
Take the podium, take the podium.
Condition number, we will be clarifying condition number two, stating that vinyl siding will not be provided on the exterior building walls, only in the eaves and soffit areas. The condition number four will remain unchanged, two-car garages will be provided. Condition number seven, we'll be, um, making a clarification on condition number seven, allowing a fifteen-foot separation between dwellings and not a fifteen-foot side yard setback. Condition number nine, a, a, a change to the minimum house size being twenty-three hundred square feet rather than the twenty-one referenced. Condition number ten, eliminating condition number ten requiring the staggering of the, of the structures along the front building line, and condition number twenty, deleting condition number twenty because it's in conflict with the, uh, covenants existing on the subdivision. Those are, uh, the conditions that were referenced.
Okay.
And then the, uh, final condition was that the applicant would submit within six months a, a full, uh, preliminary plat and go through the subdivision process.
Is six months enough time, or do we need longer?
You have to file within six months.
Okay.
Mr. Hancock?
Just so we're, just so we're clear, I think the record will clearly reflect, but those stipulations are acceptable, you as read, is that clear?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right.
So, we make a motion to approve with the stipulations as read and a six-month filing period.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here and none, those favor I.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
The next item, applicant Dennis J. Webb, Junior, on behalf of PME Oakwood Ellinwood LLC is requesting a conditional use permit from Heavy Industrial District for an industrial warehouse on the existing parcel of land currently being used for heavy equipment training. This is in council members, Sonia Gregory, District One. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
It's all right. You all right. She's worked in the city so long time, that's okay.
Good evening.
Please, let's keep, let's keep the talking down.
Good evening, my name's Din Webb, twelve-thirty Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh nine, here on behalf of the applicant. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce Tom Cobb. Tom is a senior vice president with Oakmont and is ready and willing to take your questions if necessary. Thank you. Uh, the property at issue, you can see on page one of the handout that was just distributed, is roughly twenty-two acres, it's in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of East Tanner's Church Road and Dunn Road, and it was last used as a union training facility, but it's vacant now and has been for some time. And we submitted photos of the current state of the property with our application, and as you would have seen, it is not in very good condition. The property is zoned HI, heavy industrial, and shows as the MXI district on the future land use map, which allows for mixed use, uh, commercial and industrial uses. Uh, Oakmont is a premier industrial developer in the metropolitan area, and it bought this property in, at the end of November of, uh, two thousand eighteen, it actually owns it. Uh, it planned at the time to construct a warehouse on this site, and about a month later, it went in for an LDP right around, uh, uh, January one of two thousand nineteen. And at that time, it learned that about two weeks earlier, the city had adopted a new ordinance that required a CUP for warehouse use, and so that's why we're here tonight. Uh, the proposal you will see on page two of the handout is for a three hundred and twenty thousand square foot warehouse. Uh, it fronts East Tanner's Church Road, and you'll notice there are three access points onto that road. Uh, there's no proposed access onto Dunn Road, uh, on page north. The main driveway under the site is the furthest west on the handout that you see. It's a three-lane entrance, uh, that allows for stacking for at least ten trucks, and there's also overflow stacking on the site. So, the message is, uh, there is no need for trucks to park on East Tanner's Church Road as they're waiting to go onto this property. The property provides for sufficient stacking, uh, as is. I think the most important part of this development is sort of the orientation. Uh, on page south, you'll notice that... On page south, you'll notice that everything on the site orients in that direction, and that's important, because there is one residential development in the area, it's the Lakeside Mobile Home Community, which is actually northeast of this site. Everything on this site will happen in a direction away from that residential district, the loading, unloading, entry, exit, and so on. It'll occur away from that mobile home park. And if you turn to page three of the handout, you'll see an elevation that demonstrates the quality of the construction materials and the architectural appearance proposed. I know we have a staff recommendation of approval, so I'm gonna try and get to the high points here, so I can take your questions, but I want to touch on a few things. Certainly, the use that is being proposed is consistent with what is out there now. Basically, everything on East Tanner's Church Road is heavy industrial as is. The use proposed is consistent with the future land use map, the designation for this property. The FLOOM specifically allows industrial uses on this site. This use will have, obviously, no impact on schools, but it has a very positive financial impact on the county. We submitted some financial data with our application that shows, for example, that the property tax revenue generated by this site would be two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars estimated per year. There is no property tax being generated on the property now, because the union use qualifies it as an educational use, so it is exempt from taxes. We also provided some information on estimated employment. We believe, very conservatively, that the site will generate at least forty jobs, which would also create about one point five million dollars in annual salaries. I guess the last point that, again, I want to emphasize is the orientation. Again, it's away from the mobile home park to the north and east, and I want you to know that Tom actually met with the manager of that mobile har, mobile home community. He provided a copy of the site plan to her, provided some detail in the proposal, and offered to meet with the residents of that area, and has heard no objections or concerns from anyone in that facility to date. In fact, the only concern we've heard at all about this development was raised at the planning commission, and I was not there, but it was relayed to me, and that related to truck traffic. And I think there's a misunderstanding about that issue. As I mentioned, the site is zoned H O, H I right now, which will allow for a truck terminal as of right today. Somebody could have put a truck terminal on this property without coming in front of this body for a C U P or any approval, for that matter, and a truck terminal will generate about three point five to six point five times the amount of truck traffic that this proposed warehouse will generate. So I think what we have proposed will certainly have a lower impact than that type of use and some of the other types of use, uses that would be allowed on the site right now as of right. The last point I want to address relates to sidewalks. The code requires sidewalks on Dunn Road, and if you've been up in Dunn Road, you know that's basically a driveway. It's really not a typical public right of way. It has served as a driveway for this site when it was a unit facility and for a site to the north. And we were asking that that requirement be waived for two reasons. First of all, there's a stand of trees behind the proposed building, between the rear of the proposed building and Dunn Road, and those trees would obviously be impacted by the addition of a sidewalk in that area, and we think that buffer would be important to the area. And we also think it's a sidewalk no one wants to use, would use, and I don't think the county wants folks walking around near this industrial facility. So we're asking that that particular requirement be waived. We talked about it with staff, we talked about it with transportation, and we believe we have everybody's support on that waiver request. So I think I'll stop there. I'm happy to take any questions you have. I'll reserve whatever time we have left, and I would ask for your vote of approval with a waiver for the sidewalk on Dunn Road. Thank you.
All right, does board members have any questions?
What did Mr. Matarco say about the sidewalk?
Uh, Mr. Kelly was in the meeting that I attended. We were asked to send an email to Mr. Matarco or a letter to him explaining the justification for our request for a waiver. I know that was sent, I have not heard a particular comment from him, but I believe there's some conversation with the staff on this today. My understanding, third-hand, is that they're supportive of this request, and I think he certainly was in our meeting, and he just said it's something to bring up in front of the board, so they're aware of it and can actually state an affirmative support for that request.
Any other questions? All right, is there anybody here who would like to speak for or against this applicant's request? Come forward, please.
Couple of things that come to mind. Number one, you guys put another warehouse in, we're gonna have one million square feet of empty warehouse space within a two-mile area. That's ridiculous. We're talking about the truck traffic. These roads are not meant for trucks. If you've ever ridden down East Tanner and come up to Williamson Road, you've got about a fifty-foot turn radius. I personally have almost been run over by trucks from G P Trucking on numerous occasions. You come up to that intersection, you either have to move out of their way, back up, or they will run over you. These roads are not meant for this. I find it very interesting that the zoning notice was put on Dunn Road. Dunn Road, no one goes down Dunn Road. It's virtually a ghost road, it's virtually a one-lane cow path road. So I find it very interesting that the zoning notice was put on that road and not put on East Tanner anyway. We need no more warehouses in this area. We can't take it. The roads can't take it. The system cannot take this area. It was not made for this. There's tons of places to put warehouses. Fort Gillon Logistics, up and down forty-two, that whole corridor is made for that area. That is what this is made for. Please do not put any more warehouses in this area. We can't take it. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against? Come forward, please.
Mr. Chairman?
We got somebody coming up, sir.
Officer Beck.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Linda Jones, and I do live in the area that is of concern at this point. I would like to say that since I've been in that community over the last six years, there's been one thing after the other relative to warehouses in our community. We want a residential community. We do not want a warehouse community. This is really disrupting the lives of the people in those communities. And quite often, as was stated before, the signs are put up so that people can't see them, and I'm sure that's intentional. But we are not going to step back and allow these things to continue to happen, and we want you to understand that. It's our representatives. Speak for us. Speak for us. Tell them no more warehouses. No more warehouses.
Mr. Garber.
I see here Z A G, I'd assume that stands for Zoning Advisory Group, and it recommends deny, need I say anymore? Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? For or against? Commissioner Gregory. Wait a minute, wait a minute, I think there's a lady coming.
Hello, LaRonda Dawson, I reside at forty-six twenty-one Mitchells Ridge Drive in Ellinwood, Georgia, and I would just like to say, as a community, we would like to see more family-oriented restaurants in our community versus the warehouses. We already have warehouses in the area, and we just don't want to see anymore. The air pollution, it makes our air pollution bad, and we don't have things for our families. We've been here for about seventeen or eighteen years, and we've yet to see what was proposed when we first moved in this community. We've not seen it yet. So, you know, I ask that you guys please deny this. It's very frustrating. We don't want warehouses. We want family-oriented restaurants, things to do with our children. That's what we want to see. Thank you.
Ms. Webb, do you have anything?
I was just gonna touch on a few things. First of all, as mentioned, that there's about a million square feet of empty warehouse space in the area. There's actually one warehouse that predominates that number. It's about eight hundred thousand square feet. It was approved not too long ago, and my understanding is that that owner's looking for one tenant, and it takes a long time to find one tenant to take that kind of space, but it will, and certainly the information that have, that Oakmont is operating from indicates that there is, will, is and will be demand for this particular use in the future. In terms of truck traffic, again, denying this request won't prevent the truck traffic. You know, you could, like I said, you could have a truck terminal on this property now that would generate a multiple of the kind of truck traffic we're talking about here. There are a number of other uses that are allowed, like asphalt plant and things of that nature, that would also create truck traffic. So I think that's a misunderstood issue. I do understand a desire for family restaurants and residential areas, but there are places for it, and there are places that aren't. If you've been on East Tanner Church Road or Dunn Road, I think it's hard to understand how you put a family restaurant on this site or in that area. It's just completely inconsistent with what's there now and will be for the foreseeable future. And so with that, again, I respect everybody's opinion in this process, I really do. We worked hard on this to try and minimize and mitigate the impact from what we're proposing, and also honor some of the changes that were proposed in December. But again, zoning changes were made at that meeting in December. Properties were rezoned from H I to other more mixed-use districts. This property wasn't. It was kept heavy industrial even during that time, which indicates at least a tacit recognition, recognition, I think, by the county and by the board that this is an industrial property. Thank you.
Commissioner Gregory.
Ms. Spann, would you confirm what Mr. Webb just said, the current zoning classification of this property?
The property is currently zoned H I, heavy industrial, so the heavy industrial, as per the December eighteenth text amendment, requires a conditional use permit for warehouses to locate in in the heavy industrial district as well as in light industrial district.
Okay, and Mr. Webb, from where this property is located on Dunn Road, what is the area of approximate area, you know, to adjacent to six seventy-five?
Okay, you can, thank you for asking that question. If you turn to page four of my handout, you'll see basically the proposed access route, and the access is directly from Tanner's Church Road to Williamson Road. The traffic will only be on Williamson Road for two hundred and ninety feet. It'll take a right on Anvil Block Road for four hundred and ninety feet and be right on six seventy-five. It's hard to imagine more direct access unless there was a ramp basically onto the site. So, you know, basically, the predominant route is Tanner's Church Road with a very brief stop onto Williamson and Anvil Block.
Okay. One of the things, and I understand, you know, what residents do want in the areas, I have to agree with you, this is Dunn Road and Tanner's Church, there's, right now, is being used as just a dumping ground for everything. This building, while it will help the county tremendously, because right now it's not on the county tax roll, we are not changing the zoning, we're just allowing a C U P so that we can put this back on the tax roll. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this petition from the petitioner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It's unanimous. Nay. Four and one.
Nay.
Three, two. Three, two with Commissioners.
Davis.
Davis. Davis and Warner. Objecting. It passes. Please, no outbursts. Let's be respectful.
The next item is a C U P nineteen oh one dash nine. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit from Article three, Section three point twenty-one, General Business District, to allow for a convenience store with fuel sales. The subject property is located at two twenty-two Upper River Derrick Road, Jonesboro, Georgia. It is in Commissioner Davis, District Four.
Good evening, state your name first.
Greg Brooks, Kennesaw, Georgia.
From where?
Kennesaw, Georgia.
Albert Texing, from Ten Genatin Road.
Who's speaking?
Hi there. Just representing Chevron Texaco and the brand that would be provided to this current gas.
Speak a little louder.
I'm with Landsoil Company. We represent Chevron Texaco, the brand that would be imaged to the site. I know this store has been closed, and so we're just trying to reopen the location. I know this store, this gas station currently has been closed, and so we're just trying to reopen the location. We're planning on putting an investment of roughly three hundred thousand to upgrade the site. That includes new dispensers, imaging, asphalt, and several other items. I believe the ZAG approved this already in our previous meeting, so really, it's a simple question of reopening the gas station is what our goal is.
Are there any questions from the board for the gentleman?
You've already met with her about the conditions?
That's right.
Can you go over the conditions, Ms. Spann?
Yes, the staff have recommended five conditions, and in addition to that, the zoning advisory group added, added three conditions. The staff recommended conditions, and the ZAG adopted staffs and their conditions, and that is, the signage should be restricted to the canopy, structures and the building facade, that no ground sign be permitted, no outside vending machines allowed along the storefront, provide an enclosed dumpster area with opaque screening of the trash receptacle, provide trash receptacles on the outside, near the pumps and on the entrance, no addition to the existing structure, the fencing be provided along the side and the rear, and that if an disturbance permit is triggered, that the, with the repaving of the asphalt area, that an eight-foot sidewalk be provided along both street frontages. And that concludes the itemized conditions. That would be five, that would be eight conditions total.
Any other questions? All right, so is there anybody here to speak for or against this applicant's request? Anybody like to speak up? Forward. Well, come forward, Mr. Garber.
Board, I see that ZAG here recommends approval with eight conditions, of which I, I hope, I'm seeing some of them up here on the board, but I want another condition put there, that the outside and area of the, of the convenience store be kept as clean and free of debris as Chick-fil-A and Q T. Now just put that in their, in their pipe and let them smoke it.
Is there anybody else? Commissioner Davis.
Mr. Garber.
Yes, sir.
I have actually spoken to him about the maintenance plan on this property, as well as many of the other gas station owners in the area for that. The other, the other point of emphasis I want to make is that they have gone ahead and said yes to an eight-foot wide sidewalk. We only have roughly, what, four, four and a half feet sidewalks in this county. What we need to do is, two of me cannot walk on those sidewalks side by side, and we've got children and everything else in this community, and for them to agree upon that, I think is, they should be commended on as well, as well as some of the others. So we are going to go after exactly what you said, and hopefully, they will keep it as clean as Chick-fil-A.
Commissioner, let me add one thing, that I and everybody else will be watching.
Do you have a motion, Commissioner Davis?
Motion to approve with the conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And let me say this, it's been a hot story for a long time, so I appreciate what y'all are doing.
And Chevron standards will be upheld as well.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is a C U P nineteen oh one zero zero ten. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit within the General Business District to allow a self-storage facility. This is a companion conditional use permit for the proposed rental service for the storage facility. The property is located at seventy-three ninety-one Terrill Boulevard. It is in District Four, Commissioner Davis District.
Good evening, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chairman Turner, Vice Chair, and Council Commissioners. My name is John Scoville, I represent U-Haul of Southern Georgia. I represent U-Haul of Southern Georgia. We are trying to expand our business that's currently operating across the street on the corner of Battle Creek and Terrill Boulevard. This property that we're discussing today is across from Chick-fil-A, so they'll be watching. I, we are proposing, we are proposing to build on a 27, or 23,000 square foot footprint, basically, a state-of-the-art, modern, self-ran, but remotely controlled from already existing business of 1979 in the community of Clayton, the U-Haul facility across the street remotely. We will have on-staff 230-some-thousand-dollar electronic system, including monitors, monitor stations throughout the building. It will be walked through daily with mobile devices and checked. It will be cleaned as customers move in and out. But basically, our customers at that facility, we are full. The upgrades that we've done at the other facility that was built earlier than 1979, I'm not quite sure, I think it was 1976, if I may, if I may put that out there. We have done everything from make the, in the past five years, make it 100% climate control in that existing building. Customers like that to keep their household goods nice and comfortable. And so, we're full and want to expand. We're trying to invest right across the street versus going to either the city or going to another community or a county to do so in this area. We have been approved by ZAG with conditions. We will honor every condition, including the eight-foot expansion sidewalk. And we will do so, hopefully, the Starship beside us in the rec center that's sort of vacant right now in the car lot will also comply, hopefully, to do the same thing. And that way, they can get from the intersection, which you guys are expanding on our current property, and this will help offset some of the loss that we're gaining by that expansion of road at the intersection. That's the second reason we decided to invest back with Clayton County and not move somewhere else. We have been taxpaying business since 1979 at that location. We currently house for family goods of our customers 407 units there inside. This new facility will allow another 1,000 units on a 23,000 footprint. We will be under all the conditions that are with the guidelines of the community as far as the height. The only setback that we, that we went through with the fire department, which we have resolved, is where it sits on the property in order for, to give us a 26-foot variance around the property in case of emergency. The other condition on there says that, clarification, I have my civil engineer gentleman, Mr. Logan, he's going to introduce himself to go over a few conditions on specifics to make you guys understand where we're at. Talking to Mr. Car, is it Mr. Carmen, I believe, Chris, from the fire department, they were concerned about access being how Terrill Boulevard is very busy, three lanes, and they're certain, during certain times, like races and such, it gets sort of clustered and all that kind of thing. So, the road behind it, they didn't, it's not really clear whether or not you guys would allow for an emergency only with a knockbox type of access for the fire department, but we offered that because it was a concern of theirs. So, let that be noted, but he's going to ask for clarifications of that actual guideline that you're trying to let us have, okay? I'll, I'll turn this over to Logan for a minute, and we'll go over the conditions.
Good evening. Logan Clark, Alpharetta, Georgia.
Speaking to the mic, sir.
Logan Clark, Alpharetta, Georgia.
When you're talking, if you're talking to Mike.
Sure. So, there were six conditions approved by ZAG. There's one that the fire marshal had concern with, specifically, the access point on Wilson Road. The original plan that was submitted for ZAG approval was requested by the fire marshal to be modified. The building was shifted away from the northern property line to give fire access along that side of the building. It's a six-story building, so they need aerial access on all sides. And then he requested specifically an emergency egress and ingress along Wilson Road. That would be a gated access that's not for daily use. It would be knockbox on the gate for fire access only, but it would specifically be an access point on Wilson Road, so we would request that text be modified to state no open access or free access on Wilson Road, emergency only.
So, let me reiterate, this is above and beyond what the actual code calls for. We're just, we were talking, communicating back and forth, and they were concerned about it because it is under the requirements of the height. We are under that requirement. But it's still a concern for the fire department who have to actually do something just in case something happens. So, we wanted to step up and say, well, if that's the case and would help with emergency access, then we'll be glad to do that and keep it monitored as far as a gate, a gate of some sort with only access through a knockbox. Okay? Any questions?
Any questions from board members?
Ms. Spann, can you speak on the fire routes off of Wilson?
Yes. We do have before, before you, six conditions recommended by the zoning advisory group. The first condition addresses the site plan. The site plan that we have before you today has a revision to it, and this revision is resolved there meeting with the, with the fire department. The, we would, staff suggests that the dates on the, this reference be changed, the first day of January be changed to March 19th, 2019. We received the revised plan today, and the drawing was prepared by the, the American Real Estate dated March 13th, 2019. So, we would change those dates because that reflects the actual approved plat, actual, actual site plan that was submitted with the revisions referenced by the fire marshal's office. Condition number two did limit the building to six stories as the maximum height, which does comply with the countercode requirements. The change to the site plan from what was previous was that the building was moved more center to the property so that there was free access all the way around the property. That's where the change occurred. The third condition requires architectural treatments to be compatible with the Terrill Boulevard overlay district. The fourth, fourth condition requires a 50-foot buffer. You can see on the site plan, the green area where the property is Jones Residential, they will be providing a 50-foot buffer in that area. And then, lastly, not lastly, but the fifth condition, no access point shall be from, from Wilson Road. Staff suggest that this condition be modified to state that no access point should be granted from Wilson Road except for emergency fire access. The sixth condition being that an eight-foot, eight-foot wide sidewalk be provided along the frontage of Terrill Boulevard.
Any other questions? All right, is there anybody here to speak for or against this request? Anybody speak for or against it?
I got one little thing to say.
Please, let's, let's keep the noise down.
You mean you want me to quit talking? I hope that I'm making some sort of impression that a conditional use for this, the Commissioner in District 4 is Commissioner Davis, and ZAG has recommended approval with six conditions. Again, I agree with all those conditions, but again, I must iterate that conditions must be that they keep the front place of their place looking good. We have to demonstrate not only to ourselves, but other people who come into our community that we are aware and are a clean people, even though this is a storage facility, and I recognize that us Clayton Countyans are very nomadic, but we are still clean. Thank you.
Would you like to say anything rebuttal? You got anything else you'd like to say?
I keep seeing a picture of, if you'll flip over to the location, we sustained location that we did in Morrow to our neighbors. That facility was a desolate squatter's haven when I found it. I personally walked up on that, and you couldn't see it because it was so grown up, and people were living in it illegally. A lot of things going on there, and that's just a short distance away. So, the need for our facilities, to give you an example, that location closed, and I invited all of Clayton County to come to the grand opening that we had last May. We're going on almost a year, roughly, of business, working with the fire department there and all the community, Sylvia and everybody else, we came, I mean, we did wonders together. That facility now has 565 families that have their goods in our facility in a year's time. So, our product is very, it's in high demand, and I'm trying to meet our customers' needs by providing this brand-new ground up. I really wish the city, the city would have worked with us on the, the building that is in desolate need of love on Terrill Boulevard in the city district, but they didn't want to do that. They want another boys' club to go there. So, what we decided to do is to keep the value of our customers' wants close to establish building there on Terrill Boulevard that's already been there for many, many years, to invest back into the community there instead of through the city. And that's why we're here today.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
One thing I, I would like to say, I don't know if that's your property on Battle Creek as well, but if we could get that property cleaned up, I just want to put that out there right this moment, since we do have you here, to look something like what you have up on the screen, so.
I would love to meet with you, and you tell me exactly what you need, because we've already poured about $400,000 into that property in the past five years.
Then we will.
Yes.
I'm moved that we approve with conditions.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Four, one, it passes.
I just want to make a comment. I actually, I live in District 3, but I used to live over there, and that U-Haul never looked like it looks now. So, I appreciate you for, now, what I'm saying is, I appreciate you for bringing it here, but I will say this, we always want to build new, but we have to remember to maintain what's already there. And that one on Battle Creek, it never looked that way. So, that's why I'm opposing to it, number one, and number two, because I just don't feel that U-Hauls are going to get us where we need to be in terms of expanding out our community and development with our comprehensive plan. Simple as that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Alan Clark.
The next item is CUP 1901-11. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit within the General Business District to allow vehicle rental services. This is a companion conditional use permit for the proposed self-storage facility. The subject property is located at 7391 Terrill Boulevard, Jonesboro. It's also in Commissioner Davis's-
You can go. Yeah, we're finished. It passed. Where are we at? Is the applicant here?
I think they're the same.
Oh, same, I'm sorry, I'm running y'all off. I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes.
No, yeah, I apologize.
It's the same, we're gonna, you have to have the vehicles, like, just like you do everywhere else to move folks around, so we're asking for the conditions on the same term of the same property to go hand in hand. So, again, this is a remotely ran location, so you're going to have the equipment there because you have families moving, but there, it's not going to be full, full-line display that things like that that we have across what we have it now. So, that's the purpose. We can't, we got to do one with the other.
Okay, anybody like to speak up for or against this? All right, Commissioner Davis.
Ms. Spann, we had spoke about vehicles in the front being not allowed.
Yes, that's not one of the recommended conditions. The, this is the site plan, the way the property is oriented. There's actually, there's actually no parking in front of the building per se. The most of the parking is located to the side. The one big block area out front of the building is a, is an oversized canopy, so there will be parking underneath the canopy, I would imagine, during transitional times with customers.
Load-unload is what it's called, yeah.
But the, but the parking as shown on the site plan is primarily to the sides of the rear, with the exception of those few spaces that, that are along that canopy, that canopy line.
But as far as rental trucks and vehicles, they will not be out front.
What's going to, what you're going to see there on the side is the actual loading dock that we have to have where the elevator and everything is, and the emergency staircases on the side of the building, not the front.
And my concern is basically the same thing as Commissioner Warner had just spoken about. We know we have a transient area, and we've got to provide something for them, but we don't want to just provide anything. So, that is my, that's my concern.
We still have the same six conditions that we applied to the storage facility, the same six conditions recommended to be applied to the, to the site for the parking of trucks. We can add a condition that states that no, no U-Haul vehicles will be parked, will be stored, this parking could be, you know, be very short-term, that no vehicles will be, will be stored in the front yard.
And that would mean after hours?
In the after, period.
After business hours, okay.
Should not be stored. I mean, parking and storing is a little different because parking is short-term, but storage would mean overnight when they're shut down or if the vehicle's not in use, that's storage, and that should not be stored in the front yard, or at that condition. That would make it seven conditions.
Okay.
The, so all the conditions will be the same as previously recommended, including those dates that we referenced for changes, and including the access issue on Wilson Road that it only be for fire safety access.
I guess, is that agreed upon? Would that be agreed upon?
As, read the, read the condition again just to make sure I'm clear.
Okay, the, the condition that was added, that no storage of U-Haul trucks be provided, be allowed in the front yard.
Okay. Yeah, there's no parking spots even on the site plan, on the front.
Just one, one-
Take the mic, please.
The site has two front yards, the front yard of Terrill Boulevard. That's what we'd like to add.
Well, that, that's true. The Wilson Road could be, would, could be conceivably considered a front yard, though they're not, they're not oriented that way, so.
You mean facing Terrill Boulevard.
I'm speaking of Terrill Boulevard.
We're, we're clarified that, that front, for the front yard along Terrill Boulevard.
Yes. We can meet that condition.
Make a motion, we approve with the condition, with the seven conditions.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Four, one, it passes. Thank you, sir. Yes.
The next item is CUP 1901-0012. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit within the General Business District for a convenience store without gasoline services. The applicant wishes to have beer and wine sales, which would categorize the existing business as a convenience store. Convenience stores are permitted within, of approved conditional use within the General Business zoning district. This is in District 4, Commissioner Davis.
Good evening. This is Afta Walam. We have this location, we are operating at a grocery store right now, and we are, when we approached for the beer and wine license, we came to know that we have to get approval, conditional use permit approval before we start selling beer and wine there. That's the reason we just applied for conditional use permit. I was here in the last meeting, the ZAG has approved with four conditions.
All right, anybody have any questions for the applicant, board members?
Can you read the conditions, please, Ms. Spann?
The, the zoning advisory group recommended approval with five conditions. Those conditions are, oh, yeah, okay. Those conditions are that the, that it be approved conditional to the, to the corner smart business that's currently located there now, that gasoline sales are not allowed under the conditional use permit, and that there be no outside vending machines along the storefront, and that the dumpster area be opaque, have opaque screening, and the trash receptacle not be visible. And in addition to that, we should have the sidewalks, eight-foot sidewalks.
Eight-foot, I thought we spoke about a landscape plan for that corner as well. Well, I thought we spoke about a landscape plan for that corner as well.
The, um, we could add a condition for additional landscaping along the, along the, uh, the property frontage, as lo- as, as, along with the improvements for the eight-foot sidewalk. So, that would be, uh, that would be six conditions.
Okay, so is there anybody here who wants to speak for or against?
Mickey Garber, Rex, Georgia. Again, let me remind you that I, I saw the requirements for conditional use, but I did not see responsibility for keeping it clean. You know, that, that, that landscaping is warm, fuzzy trimmings you put on it to make me feel good. Well, I don't need warm, fuzzy. We need clean. And the stipulation for running a business is not only the store be clean, the bathrooms be clean, but the outside be clean. We are not a third-world country.
Anybody else like to speak for or against? Commissioner, Commissioner Davis?
I need to make a clarifying statement. There are some planned road improvements along, along both of those road frontages, so that, that's one of the reasons why the sidewalk condition did not appear, because of, uh, if we required them to put the sidewalk in, once the road improvements come in, they would end up having, they would, they would lose those sidewalks. And most times when the property, sidewalks provisions come about whenever a land disturbance permit application is applied for. So, whenever there is mass grading or mass pavement, paving to a site, that triggers a land disturbance permit, which automatically triggers site development improvements like landscaping and sidewalks. In this case, since the applicant is merely changing his business operations and are not making any site improvements, and we had the anticipated road improvements for the sidewalk, there were, that was why the, uh, can, the sidewalk condition was omitted. We, whatever the board desires, the board desires to entertain additional landscaping, improvements to the site, we can add that condition or whatever conditions, uh, that the board would like to add. So, right now, we have those standing conditions and I'll just let the board make a decision on the eight-foot sidewalk and the landscaping. We can, uh, however that time is going to work with the, uh, road improvements.
Well, we definitely want the landscape plan included in this.
Because we'll, then we'll, we'll, if, if the board desire, we'll add a condition that states that, that landscaping should be provided along the, the two street frontages to, in accordance to, uh, standards by the county, county artest.
I make a motion, we approve with the conditions.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, any other questions?
Chairman, before you do that, uh, you might want to ask the applicant if he agrees to that condition.
Yeah, I agree to all.
I apologize.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We agree to all the conditions.
You agree to all, okay.
Now, I make the motion with all the conditions.
I second the motion, any other questions?
I have a question. Are you moving into the building in the state that it's in now, or are you going to improve the building itself?
We're not improving anything in the building in, in here.
You're not improving the building?
No, we are not doing any improvement, uh, to the building, we just, uh, there's no improvement required, but this building is already existing.
I, I just need to make a note, I have received phone calls, it's not my district, but I do have some friends that own a place right next door and they complain about the state of that building, so I just want to make that statement.
That building, actually, this particular building was closed for last three, four years.
I know.
Uh, we just started that, but, uh, right, if you, if you see to the le- to the left side, right side of this, of that particular building, there's a, what, this is an automotive service shop there, um, there, you may be getting phone calls because of them.
No, it's specific to this one, sir. Because the building, the owners that are right behind there, which are the Loggins, Kearns, and McCombs, right down there, I'm a Rotarian, it's right behind there, so that's all I had to ask, I'm sorry.
Nobody came to oppose.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This property's been closed twice for, do we know how many years?
No, I have no knowledge of the, the time span.
All right, any other questions, those in favor, eye.
Aye.
Eye, opposed.
Nay.
Four one, it passes. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
The next, the next item is CUP nineteen oh one thirteen. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit within the agricultural zoning district. The applicant wishes to convert an existing accessory structure to an accessory dwelling. The proposed building is five thousand square feet and four thousand heated floor space. The primary home on the subject property is seven thousand eight hundred seventy-three point five oh square feet. This is in Commissioner Warner's district.
Is the applicant here? Please come forward.
The applicant indicated that.
Good evening, I'm Tim Irwin, I'm in here.
You can pull the mic off.
Sorry. Uh, Tim Irwin, I'm here for Brian.
Yes, what'd he say about the, uh, your, your application?
We have nothing to present, it's just pure for questions.
I can do a little briefing if.
Go ahead.
Just, just the applicant out, if that's okay. The, uh, request here is to, is to, uh, convert in a, a existing barn structure partially to an, to an accessory dwelling. The ordinance requires a conditional use permit for accessory dwellings to be provi- to be provided in, to, as a secondary structure to a primary residence. As you can see, this is a, uh, large tract of land, uh, over two hundred acres, and the, uh, garage structure, the structure under question here, can you point to that barn? The structure under question, the, the, that's a large barn that's no longer used for animal storage right now, it's been converted to, uh, family use and there, and the proposal is to put a, a small living quarters inside of that, uh, structure, which makes it an accessory dwelling and therefore triggers this conditional use permit.
Okay, is there anybody here who wants to speak for or against? Anyone like to speak up for or against this request?
A very good quay, Mickey Garber.
Please, 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 let's keep down the noise.
Mickey Garber, Rex, Georgia. One question is, what is the description that he wants to use this place for? All I get here is, uh, is number of square feet and it's two hundred acres. Can we have a little bit more in-depth? Yes or no?
Ms. Pan, he wants to use it for...
The CUP is for an accessory dwelling. I think the, the building has multiple uses and the, uh, applicant could address the, the multiple uses of that building, but the reason for the CUP is so that they can provide in a, a living quarters within that accessory building.
And provide the heat in it.
Single family, single family?
Yes, yes, single family, as we refer to it in the code as an accessory dwelling. So, if you had a single-family home, you would be allowed to have a mother-in-law suite, a garage apartment, under the terms of accessory dwelling, but that would be triggered through this commu- this conditional use permit process.
Can I, can I just say this? Mr. Garber, this is an estate residential, um, property, it's not the same as... The question, line of question you're asking is probably generally linked it to when you've got like, you know, eleven thousand square foot dwelling. This is an estate residential, it's a little different.
Commissioner Warner, may I interrupt, please?
You sure can.
Sir, welcome to my neighborhood.
I guess he...
All right, Commissioner Warner, you have anything?
No, sir, I just, um, I make a motion that we approve, um, uh, the recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second motion, sir.
Motion's been second, any other questions? Here and now, those favor eye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
The next item is CP nineteen, C, CUP nineteen oh one zero zero fourteen. The applicant, Stephen Clark, is requesting a conditional use permit in the general business district for a religious facility, place of worship, within an existing building with multiple suites. The property is located at sixty-four ninety-eight Terra Boulevard. This is in Commissioner Davis, District Four.
Good evening, I'm, uh, Stevie Clark, and I live in Jonesboro. Um, this facility here, I'm going to say about six years ago, we partnered up with a church called Trinity Community Church, and we do a feeding that drew high school every Thanksgiving. And, um, the two Trellis community, one that is behind, thank you, South, South Side Mall, there's one behind there, and that's another Trellis community that is behind Little Giant. They will always come out for the feeding, and so, in twenty seventeen, we made a decision that we wanted to do something else. So, on Christmas Eve, we were looking for a spot to rent out that we would be able to do something special on Christmas, so we did a Christmas breakfast and some clothing that Christmas Eve, and we seen that location there. And, uh, we did a feeding there, we did clothing there, and the foot traffic was something great, awesome, and we just had a question, were we going to be there permanently? And, um, so, we thought about it, we actually prayed about it, and so, we consulted the, uh, owner of the building to see we'd be able to, to, uh, get the space leased.
All right, are there any questions from the board members?
What's, what is the building currently being used for?
Uh, from what, uh, it was empty, uh, when we went in there. From what I heard, uh, project owner was once a jury store, from not...
Jury store, a, uh, iconic. Been several different times.
And it has, wasn't it being used as some type of church facility or, or some kind of prayer room?
Yeah, she said it was a church facility once before, before we got in there.
So, is it already, so I guess it already, is it already been approved for that?
The, s- some of these uses may, may have pre-existed the zoning code requirement for conditional use permit. There, this is a multi-use building, so there are, my understanding, other places of worship existing in that, in that structure. The application that we're addressing tonight is only, this conditional use permit is only for the space twenty-two hundred square feet of the area that the, the applicant is leasing. So, the conditional use permit will, will be for that property, but limited to only that use. So, if any other, uh, uh, place of worship in that building ceased to operate and decide to come back in at a later date, they would have to go through the same conditional use permit process.
Any other questions? All right, anybody like to speak for or against this request? Anyone like to speak? Commissioner Davis?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Warner, second the motion, any other questions? Here and now, those favor eye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item is REZ nineteen oh one zero zero fourteen. The applicant, Emily Cannon, on the behalf of Prologis, or?
Prologis. Prologis.
Prologis.
Okay, Prologis is requesting a rezoning from MX Mixed Use District to Light Industrial District for a warehouse and distribution center. The property is located at four zero zero four Trade Port Boulevard, Atlanta. This is in Commissioner Hambrick, District Two.
Before we move on, could I get a point of clarification on, on the case we just adjudicated on, please? Could we, did you want to add that condition about the twenty-two hundred square feet? We did a motion to approve, but there was one standing condition that limited the space to the twenty-two hundred square feet for just that.
That wasn't inherent to, within that?
I beg your pardon?
That wasn't inherent within the, in the reading of that, we have to?
Uh, we, but in our motion, we wanted to say approval with condition, that way we know that condition carries over. And I think we just said, we just motioned to approve.
We voted, how do we bring that back then?
Now, just amend your motion to include the twenty-two hundred square feet.
So, then I make the motion to, uh, to approve with the condition.
And I'll, I'll second that motion. Any other questions about, here and now, those favor eye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Good evening.
Good evening, I have some additional materials. Um, good evening, my name is Emily Cannon. I work for a company called Prologis. Um, I'm here tonight, um, for the rezoning from, uh, mixed use that, uh, to an, a light industrial zoning. Um, wanted to also let you know we have a companion CUP for the facility as well. Prologis is a warehouse operator and we are looking to buy a property, um, that is currently owned by a company called Cooper Global. They are a transportation, um, and chauffeur company, and what we're looking to do is simply buy it from them and lease it back from them so that they can continue to operate it as they have since they bought the facility back in two thousand and five. Our obje- our objective is to, um, buy it, as I said, lease it, and update it to, um, Prologis standards for the area. We have, um, one of my colleagues will speak to it as well, but, um, a large holding in Clayton County where we've been for over twenty-five years and like to, uh, update our properties to the highest, um, institutional quality and condition. So, one of the things that I wanted to mention is that the property will be continued to use, be used exactly as it has been. Um, the updates that we're making are only to make it look better and not to change any physical properties of the, of the property itself. Um, the property, very simply, um, is, as you can see, thirty-five thousand square feet. It has forty by forty-foot column spacing, it has, uh, very limited number of, only six dock-high doors, um, some outside storage, twenty-foot clear, um, which is very consistent with an industrial property of this, um, vintage and quality. Um, one thing that I wanted to mention, this property was previously, um, zoned heavy industrial and was rezoned in the comprehensive plan as part of the Mountain View Overlay District to mixed use, but is now outside of the Mountain View Overlay District, and the, uh, future land use plan looks to be, um, for the commercial industrial and mixed use district. Um, you'll see from the picture and some of the photos that you have in your packets that the properties to the west and to the north have already been rezoned back to light industrial, and the properties to the south, um, have been zoned either industrial, um, heavy industrial or light industrial. Um, the area behind the property is very steep, um, so we don't foresee the ability to develop anything else, um, in this area. It is fully encompassed by, uh, other industrial quality product and, um, only requires going directly from the end of this cul-de-sac, uh, up to Old Dixie Highway and directly on to seventy-five, so it has no, uh, overlap whatsoever with any other retail or, uh, residential in the current use or in the future. One thing that we did want to note is that, um, our fear is that if it were not to be rezoned with the building and its industrial use and how it's been used in the past, that the economic value and reasonable use of the property will have been taken from this asset. With that, I would like to, um, reserve any time at the end for questions or comments at, at closing. Anything I can answer?
All right, so any questions from board members? Let me ask, just for clarification, ownership is changing.
Correct.
But the use is staying the same?
The use is staying the same, so the person who owns it and has been operating it now, um, has been in there since two thousand and five, we're going to just buy it from them and continue to lease it back to them for exactly what they've already been doing, where it was previously zoned and permitted.
But upgrade everything to higher standards?
Correct, that's our objective.
Any other questions from board members? All right, anybody here to speak against or for this?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, my name's Kent Mason. I'm also with Prologis, and Emily did a great job up here. I just wanted to... I just wanted to express my support as well for this building continuing to be used for what it had been used in the past. It is an existing industrial area. The, the plan is for Cooper to continue operating their business. And with the capital that they received from the sale, hopefully they can grow their business and continue to be a strong employer in Clayton County. Just wanted to give a little bit of background, Prologis is an owner and manager and developer of industrial buildings in Clayton County and throughout Atlanta. Currently, we have two and a half million square feet in Clayton County. That's with a hundred and fifty different employers. Within those two and a half million square feet, about thirty, forty-six different buildings. They're valued by the tax assessor in Clayton County at around a hundred and forty million. And they generate two-point-three million dollars in taxes each year for Clayton County, the schools, and, and the county. Businesses within our portfolio employ more than seventeen hundred people. And what, what I wanted to point out is the real variety of businesses that are at our parks. You know, we hear a lot when we come to these meetings about truck traffic and how that impacts people's lives. A lot of the employers that are in industrial buildings aren't heavy truck traffic. And I wanted to point out just a handful that are in our buildings. Precision Electronics, which is off of Clark Howell, they make the black boxes that go on airplanes, they employ eighty-one people. Source Corp., which is on Highway eighty-five, they're a document scanning operation. So, the IRS sends them documents, they scan them into a computer. They have three hundred and six employees in just a standard industrial building. Factory Automation, over off of South Ridge, has seventy employees, and they, it's a bunch of Georgia Tech engineers that do factory automation systems to go into production facilities. Jack Rubin and Sons, their movie production equipment. Google, we've all heard of Google, they have a training facility in one of our buildings. Bonzai, one of our tenants, just stores, does storage and reproduction of art, an art business. We have Lawrence Printing, Volkswagen has a service training facility. Rockwell Collins does the automation systems for planes. Batesville Casket, we know what they all do. So, this meeting, we're talking about this one particular project, but I just wanted to plant the seed in the minds of the Commissioners moving forward, that not all industrial is heavy truck traffic, not all industrial is bad. We may be in front of you again, building, looking to build industrial buildings in Clayton County. I just wanted to plant the seed that not all industrial is negative. With that, I appreciate your consideration for Emily's measure tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Commissioner Hambrick?
Yes, to add what Mr. Mason said, about three years ago, I think it was, we did a tour of all the facilities in District Two that Prologis has. And along with Chick-fil-A and Quick Trip, you can add Prologis properties as good, clean properties, and they're kept that way, and they're kept up all the time. With that said, I move that we accept this applicant, this application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here and now, those favor I?
Aye.
Oppose, issue unanimous.
Go ahead and also get the conditional use permit, so that the customer that's already in the space, Cooper Atlanta, can continue the operation of his transportation business from this facility.
Anybody like to speak for or against this? Commissioner Hambrick?
I move that we approve this application.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair?
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, issue unanimous.
The next item is nineteen oh one zero zero sixteen. The applicant is John R. McDonald. Is requesting a conditional use permit in the Heavy Industrial District to allow an industrial warehouse and distribution facility. The property is located at Zero Grant Road, Ellenwood, Georgia. This is in District One, Commissioner Gregorys.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we appreciate your hard work and review and long night. I know you've been here a long time. As you know, we are here for a conditional use permit.
State your name, sir.
I'm sorry, Greg Cat, two oh five Corporate Center Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia, three oh two eight one. Appreciate your hard work and review of this conditional use permit application. This property, as you know, was previously allowed for the use that we are requesting. When the comprehensive rezoning took place in December, as you know, this was changed from what it previously had been for thirty years. And so, this was, as you know, the park. This was HI since the nineteen eighties. The zoning has remained HI, but the text amendment made the use that we're asking for the conditional use permit, a conditional use as opposed to a permitted use. So, the CUP is critical to allow for a viable economic use and to prevent the taking of the value and reasonable use of the property. As you review the packets which were filed, you will see that incorporated into this testimony is that packet. And if you look at the fourth page of the packet, you will see that this is right by the forty-five-hundred building, which is utilized for the exact same use as this site will be. It's located near I- six seventy-five, it's in the middle of South Park. It has employed over one thousand people, it has contributed over twenty-five million dollars in property taxes alone to the county and county schools in the last twenty years. That's in addition to other tax revenue that it has generated. The owner gave Fire Station fourteen lot to the county as a part of this. It should be noted that this was a planned development with the county. The county actually sought out McDonald to develop this park, to develop this type of commercial property in order to gain the employment in that area. Also, McDonald Development worked with the county to ensure the site and building of the National Archives in Clayton County in that same area. And we are really just trying to preserve the past nearly thirty years of use allowance, which was changed just a couple of months ago. For the record, we're preserving all objections to standing and other rights that we have, both constitutional and statutory. We know that the staff has recommended this CUP, which is in your packet also for the record. And we are just asking for the use that was previously allowed and to gain that same use that was there previously, just from a couple of months ago. So, we're grateful for your review and consideration, and I know the hard work you put into this. So, thank you, and we're here for any questions if you need us. Also, Bob McLeod can address this as well, but...
All right, any questions from Mr. Hip? Did you have something to answer?
Yes, Bob. Yes. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Bob, Bob McLeod, I'm with McDonald Development, I'm the CFO. And just wanted to thank you for, for your time and for how much you've invested in trying to understand these projects and what, what's been going on. We, as Greg mentioned, this park was acquired from homeowners that sold their land and some sold their backyards to put this park in. And we bought it nineteen eighty-six and eighty-seven, before six seventy-five was put in. The bridges were in, but the road contractor had gone out of business. And so, we bought it before six seventy-five was even in. And we've just, we've done exactly as we wanted to do, which is to develop for the buildings that are in there. And this building is, as was originally planned in nineteen eighty-seven, when we started the park. Directly across the street from it is the forty-five-hundred building, which has Chick-fil-A in it, for instance, and about three-fourths of the building. And every piece of cabinetry that goes in any Chick-fil-A store is made, manufactured in that location and shipped around the country. So, as, as the gentleman from Prologis said, a lot goes on more than just warehousing and trucks. Every, every piece good that goes in one of those stores goes, comes out of there. Adjacent to that is FedEx, adjacent to that is the National Archives, which was, is a plum for Clayton County to get. We have Brand Smart, H.H. Gregg, Whirlpool. So, we've built over two million square feet in there, we finishing up, this is one of our last sites. And all we're asking is that the HI zoning that was originally, that, that this group would restore that zoning back to, do a commercial use permit. And if it, if it doesn't, I'm, I've been in real estate for thirty years. I was CPA for five with Price Warehouse, and then I've been in real estate for thirty years. And spent my whole time on the finance side of buying and selling properties and financing properties and all. And, you know, if this, if, if we're not able to restore it back to what it, what it's intended for and what the zoning is, then just in my experience, then it's got no economic value and no reasonable value. And so, it is taking the property. And we, we think that this is exactly what was intended for this park when we originally did it with the county. And we just thank you for your time and your energies, and especially staff for working with us on this. And so, if I have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Board members have any questions? All right, anybody in the audience wanna speak for or against? Come forth, please.
Quite here where this area is, what, where's the area, is that near...
Speaking of Mike, ma'am.
Is that near Anvil Block?
Yes, it is.
Okay, again, here's another warehouse in our community. And I'm gonna be calm this time, I was a little upset the last time, and I do apologize for that. But, you know, it just happens over and over again, and after a while, you just kinda get, you know, overwhelmed with the constancy of this type of thing. I just wanted to say that we really don't, don't want any more warehouses. Of course, the last time you voted for the warehouse, and I'm sure you're gonna do it again, but I still wanted to go on record saying that we just don't need anymore. The traffic is horrible, the trucks turn around in the middle of the street on Anvil Block, and if you're not careful, they will run over you, 'cause I was behind one, an eighteen-wheeler on Anvil Block, and he just turned right in the middle of the street, and I'm like, oh my God. But these are the kinds of things that are gonna happen. Pretty soon, you all are gonna be getting a lot of insurance people calling you about accidents. So, please take these things into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am, anybody else? Commissioner Gregory?
You didn't need any rebuttal from?
Oh, no. What did I say?
You ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. One of the things, South Park has been there since when, Mr. McLeod? When did Mr. McDonald develop South Park? Nineteen eighty-seven? Mr. McDonald's here, the developer of it. Okay, and, I mean, he developed that park for what it, what it is. And as the gentleman said earlier, all warehousing doesn't necessarily mean trucks. When we talk about the appearance of businesses, and somebody mentioned Chick-fil-A, Commissioner Hambrick mentioned Prologis, you can add South Park to that list. He keeps this area up. And this area, again, he developed that land to what is intended. And while I understand, and I am with everybody else on some things that we want to develop in that area, I had a meeting earlier this week with Economic Development, and we, there are plans. But also too, and I don't mean to give anybody a lesson, but as we, as this county grows, one of the reasons we enjoy such low taxes in our county is because of our business community and putting people to work. And with that, Mr. Chair, I offer a motion to approve this petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, issue unanimous.
Next item is ordinance twenty nineteen dash thirty-eight.
Mr. Ray?
I have ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-eight, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia. Appendix A zoning, Article Two zoning districts established. To add provisions to Section two-point-one for WH Warehouse, Article Three zoning district intent, permitted uses and conditional uses. To add subsections three-point-three, four-point-five, and three-point-three, four-point-six, establishing the intent permitted uses and standards for WH Warehouse District. And to add such district to the land use matrix in Section three-point-three-five, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions, to provide severability, to provide an effective date for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Oh, it's public hearing, too. Okay, so let's hold that then. All right, is anybody here to speak up for or against this request? Anybody like to speak? Okay, well, we'll go back, we have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, I apologize, let me make a clar, a clarified statement here, just to, to edify what the Chuck stated. The, this is a text amendment for warehouse, creating a warehouse district. It does not establish any warehouse zoning on, on the, on the map, it's only a text amendment at this stage, no map changes.
That being said, anybody like to speak? All right, we have a motion that's been properly moved, uh, second. Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, issue unanimous.
The next is twenty nineteen, ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-seven, which is an ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance, specifically Appendix A zoning, Article Nine, non-conforming structures, lots, and uses. Section nine-point-five, non-conforming uses of major structures and premises in combination, subsection E. And substitute in lieu thereof a new Section nine-point-five E, so as to amend the official zoning text, zoning ordinance text, which governs the exercise of zoning power of Clayton County, and to amend Article Four Special District, subsection four-point-one zero six A two and four-point-nine three A two. And substitute in lieu thereof new sec, new subsections four-point-one zero six A two and four-point-nine three A two, so as to conform with Section nine-point-five E, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability and for other purposes.
All right, Ms. Bam, anyone to simplify this one as well?
This text amendment is to a non-conforming clause in the zoning code. The current, the current code states that a property will lose its non-conforming status if it's discontinued after ninety days. This proposed text amendment seeks to extend that time, realizing that when properties go dormant, sometimes the real estate process or the change of hands takes longer than ninety days. The proposal is to extend the non-conforming clause to one year for properties zoned LIHI and Warehouse District and MXI. In the areas where zone GB, other zoning districts, without naming them all, other zoning districts other than the ones named, the time period for discontinuance is, is, is a hundred and eighty days, which is equivalent to six months. So, the grandfather discontinuance clause has been amended from ninety days to a hundred and eighty for all zoning districts, with the exception of LIHI, MXI, and WH. Those districts will have a one-year discontinuance period.
Okay, so would anybody like to speak for or against this? Anybody like to speak? All right, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Is there a second? Probably move and second, any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, it's passed, it's, no, she's not here.
The next item is the map nineteen oh one oh four. It's to rezonate seven parcels of land currently zoned, the state residential to RS-dash-one-ten, which is single-family residential district. Additionally, the request amendment to the land use plan for conservation residential to low-density residential. And this is, oh, Commissioner Warner's this.
Right.
It's right there.
Okay, do we have an applicant on this? This, this was tabled last time, correct?
These were tabled, yes. These were tabled, yes.
Okay, we're on number fourteen.
Yes, sir. All right.
Well, do we have something to say about it?
No, the only, the only thing I'm gonna say about it is, um, I know we got a lot of folks here tonight. I've had several conversations with quite a few folks, and I've already stated earlier when I first came in office, I just wanted to look at all of the leftover subdivisions to see what we could do with them. But in this case, it wasn't as clear, clearly defined or the vested rights. So I'm going to, do I need to make a recommendation now, or do we have to hear everything first?
Well, it depends on what you're gonna recommend.
Um, I think we have to hear, do we have to have a hearing first?
Well, if you're gonna take it off.
Okay. My, my motion's gonna be to, to not, to uphold the denial for right now, so.
Then we need to have a hearing. Yes.
Yeah, have a hearing. I, I, that's fine.
All right, so is anybody here to speak for or against the, uh, yes, sir? Couldn't even get it out of my mouth good.
And let me make sure everybody understands, um, the recommendation is for it to stay estate residential, is what it is, okay?
That's right.
So that way, everybody hears that clearly, okay?
Okay, Chairman Turner, Vice Chair, and fellow commissioners, um,
State your names.
I'm Herschel Traylee. I live, um, I'm president of Panhandle Preservation Association, a, which is a large and growing group of Clayton County residents, uh, who are opposed to the rezoning of Victoria Meadows. Uh, I live at five ninety-nine Inman Road, which is right around the corner from Victoria Meadows. All the people here tonight are concerned residents who love and appreciate what we have in the southernmost part of Clayton County. Let me say upfront that we are not opposed to building houses. In fact, we'd like to see the houses built on that property down there, as long as they're built in accordance with the current zoning, and as long as they're built within the design to complement what is already down there. That's all we're asking. As my wife and I and several others down there have walked through the community, the subdivisions, the HOAs, and what have you, handing out flyers, and we have done this twice, because if you remember, it was pool in February. Well, we had to go back and redo, and we did. We didn't go away. Many of the residents stated that we talked to when we went to the doors and what have you, we don't want this down here. That's the reason we moved from College Park or Riverdale or Atlanta or what have you, was to get away from this type of zone. They didn't want it. In October of two thousand and five, I stood right here addressing a different group of commissioners at that time for the same piece of property, with the same thing that we're going through right now, the same concerns. However, at that time, our group did not prevail. The property was rezoned. And work commenced almost immediately on that property to build small, low-quality houses. But you know, by the grace of God, they went bankrupt. During, during the downturn of two thousand and eight, work was ceased on that property. It has now sat there for over ten years with nothing happening to it. And, uh, we discovered, like at that time, that if a property is set with nothing being done to it, no additions, no improvements or what have you, that it could be rezoned back to its original zoning classification. And it was. In two thousand and eight, it was rezoned back to ER, one house and a one-acre lot. The rezoning, or proposed rezoning request from ER slash CR to RS one ten would lead some to think that the hundred lots that is being proposed down there for building upon immediately are ready to build on. That's not true. They are saying that sewage is in, electrical is in, streets and runoff and what have you. I'm here to tell you, electrical's not in, sewer's not in, and also, uh, there's several other things that is not ready to build. There's several things that's gonna have to be done before any building can be done, regardless of what size lots it is. Uh, streets are in there, true, and there is a sewer, uh, stormwater runoff sewers down in the middle of the streets, because the, uh, caps to the sewers were stolen, and the county had to come back and replace all of those storm caps. Also, RS one ten, and I don't have to sit here and tell you, but it requires a seventy-five-foot minimum lot width in the current proposal, and the plant that they have, which is not the latest, I understand, it's a seventy-foot, seventy by one hundred, seven thousand square foot for a lot. The minimum lot size for RS one ten says it's got to be eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. I want to talk just a little bit about sewer. That, that was a big thing the last time they were trying to build, was trying to get sewage. What were they gonna do with sewage? Well, their plan was to come across Panhandle from Flint Hoat, which is the property, across Panhandle Road, put in a lift station, and connect to the property in Victoria Meadows. Well, lots of people think that, duh, it is not. There is two hundred and fifty feet between where it comes across Panhandle to Victoria Meadows. There is no sewer pipe. How do I know that? Because the guy that bought the property out of bankruptcy, of which the easement, and I might add to the easement, was strictly a temporary work permit that they had at that time. They started, and then that's when the work stopped. And when he bought the property, there was a trench for the rest of the sewage lines to be put in, left open. No pipes was in that, two hundred and fifty feet of it. He tried to get them to come back and take care of that. They said, sorry, this was United Community Bank, who sold it to him out of bankruptcy. You bought it as is. It's your property. So he spent between eight and ten thousand dollars going in there, filling up the trench, and cleaning up all the rest of the mess that they left on that property. Also, at the same time, the permit, of course, it was a temporary, as I said, a work permit, it has expired. So this is gonna have to start from day one again, if they want to do this. I might add another thing, too, as far as Flint Hoat across the Panhandle, for a lift station, somebody's gonna pay a, pay off a sixty-one thousand dollar lien that they have against Siblin, uh, surveying company, that is still outstanding over there before they can build anything on that property. So, uh, anyway, all I'm trying to say is that if people believe those hundred lots down there are ready to go in next week and start building, they're totally wrong, completely wrong. They can't do it. Now, the current houses that we have in the southern part of Clayton County are anywhere from one to fifteen acres. One to fifteen acres. There is currently no property south of Smith Reservoir, which is on RS one ten. Currently. I've seen some signs down on Wywood and Fortner that might, might be different a little later. I hope not. But to rezone Victoria Meadows to RS one ten is what would be called, I think, spot zoning. And, uh, generally, it's, that's held to be unconstitutional, because it is by its very nature arbitrary. It's in conflict with the comprehensive zoning, uh, plan that we have, and thus, it's also contrary to the general health, welfare, and, uh, safety morality of the public. Houses in Cooper Lake, Hampton Estates, Sandy Estates, as well as the ten houses that are already built on Victoria Meadows. They did build ten houses, eight on, uh, Inman Road, two on Woolsey Road, before they closed it down. But they're all one-acre lots, every one of them. And I might add that Sandy Estates was the last subdivision that was built in our area down there. The houses in Sandy Estates are two, are three, four, five-bedroom houses. Uh, they're currently valued probably two hundred and fifty up to four hundred thousand dollars. Those houses were built on one-acre lots, and they did not have one bit of problem in selling them. They were sold as fast as they were built. I got just a couple of other things. We only have one fire station south of Smith Reservoir. We have one fire station. That's ten that's down there. We only have one police officer that's assigned to our area. In talking with the, uh, police chief for that area, we talked about that, and said, we hardly ever see anyone down, any police down here in this area. He said, we don't have any problems down there. That's the way we'd like to keep it. If this rezoning request is approved, we can look for property values in Panhandle to be greatly diminished. And we, the citizens, would have lost the opportunity to preserve the rural character of the, of the last remaining piece of Clayton County that is still open or less open. It would be like putting a rotten orange in a barrel of apples. It was spoiled quality of life in our quite desirable neighborhood. In conclusion, based upon the larger tentess behind me tonight, we have spoken with a strong voice. It is evident what we want to see in so and part of the Panhandle, that is one house, a one acre, or large lots. Thanks for your attention, and please.
Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to speak, uh.
This shouldn't take very long. My name is Tina Shiflett. I'm a resident of the Panhandle on twenty acres. I was born and raised on the road that I live on now. What concerns me at this point is I've been told two different things, and I want to clarify what is the truth. On the one hand, first of all, I'm troubled by the fact that it says Clayton County Board of Commissioners initiates a map amendment to the future land use plan from CR Conservation Residential to LDR Low Density Residential, okay? First of all, that's a big problem for me, because you're supposed to be representing our best interests and taking up for how, what is going to make my life and my community a better place. All right, my second thing is, um, I've been told by a couple of people that it's already zoned RS one ten down there, and it's no longer Conservation Residential. Can somebody explain, can somebody give me the specifics on that?
Ms. Bam, can you elaborate? Ms. Bam?
Yes, the area of, across the, across Woolsey Road is Zone RS one ten, whereas the properties on the west side of Woolsey Road are Zone Agriculture and ER. So there are a mixture of residential zoning densities in the area. However, all of these zoning designations fit upon the Low Density Residential designation, because Low Density Residential means no development would be over four units to the acre. So, then, so the, uh, they are consistent with the Low Density designation being requested, but based on the zoning map, so you can see.
Please, please, let's keep order.
So based on the zoning map that we are trying to project, project for you on the wall, you can see the mixture of zoning. Again, on the east side of Woolsey Road there, the bright yellow, is RS one ten. On the, on the west side of Woolsey Road, where you have the green, we have, uh, we have agricultural zoning and estate residential zoning. So yes, there are, uh, three residential densities existing in that general area of the Panhandle.
And can you answer real quick when that other portion was zoned? Because then I can answer their question too.
The, that, that property was zoned in on December the eighteenth, as the board initiated zoning as part, as part of a comprehensive package.
And can you please read, can somebody please read my vote when we did zone that, when y'all zoned that? It was a no. So let me just say this. I've stated earlier, and I, and the reason I wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to, to speak is because, to be quite honest with you, I've only been in this role for two years. This has been out here way before me, and I have taken every call that I can take. And I've had some very candid conversations with some people that I know, and some people that I've just gotten to know, and some good friends of mine. But what I shared with everyone is, number one, I did not vote for the zoning in December. All you gotta do is read it. Please come and get involved, not just when you see something going up. Please do. I didn't vote for that. That's number one. Number two, I looked at every one of the subdivisions I had when I first came in office, and I live, I'm not an implant, I've been there twenty years down in the Panhandle area. I pulled every subdivision that was considered a pipe farm, and I met with the previous zoning director. I met with the chairman. I met with everybody and said, where are we in the process? What can be done with it? What, because we were getting so many complaints on dumping and, um, the, the tires. And so I looked at everything, just to see how, if there's any way that we can make lemons out of lemonade. Let me say this, too. I live there. I don't want any project coming in there that's not of quality. So I took it a step further, and I started this thing called Community on the Rise. And I looked at the problematic building, and then I looked out, went out, and I drove up north to see what they were building up there, and came back and said, you know what, let's host this reception and invite them down here. So it's not that we sought out or that I sought out this community to make it high density. I want to go ahead and smash those rumors. As you just heard in that document, this started way before I got here, way before I got here. So I, I, it's not that I thought anybody was going away. I ran for this position. I'm in this position, and I'm called to this position, and I'm going to make the best decision for this community as a whole. And where I do honor and I hear the passion, 'cause I'm passionate as well. But for me, it's, it's simple, do they have vested rights, or do they not have vested rights? And what are the ordinances, and what can we do? And in this situation, that's why I've already stated in the very beginning that it's gonna remain estate residential. Now, I'm gonna take it a step further. I could've just withdrew the petition. Some people even asked me to do it, but I'm not gonna do it. I didn't withdraw it, simply because I feel like when you elect somebody in a role, you elect somebody to make a decision. I'm not gonna pass this on. So that's why the decision is made. And I want you to be able to be heard, but just know that my recommendation to the board is to leave it estate residential. And, and that's pretty much it. That's where I am.
Okay, well, that leads to my second question. Why weren't, or if they were, why weren't we advised or brought into the loop when we thought we were estate residential, and now we find out RS one tens have just sporadically popped up?
That was through text amendments, ma'am. I didn't vote for that. I'm gonna say it again. I voted against it. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not referring.
I mean, I'm just saying, that was a text amendment.
This is personal question.
I can't answer that.
As, I'm, have a career in government with the utmost respect for ethics. And in my personal opinion, as a taxpayer, and as somebody who's been fighting this battle for almost twenty years now, I mean, it, you can appreciate our position when the commissioners initiate a rezoning to a community that is very vocal, very, very known, that we would like to keep this rural area rural. Because the, talking about the transportation and the train and MARTA, we live so far out in the rural area. None of those things are gonna benefit these, these situations. However, we have, we welcome with open arms anyone that wants to come and build a house on one acre.
Well, to answer that, I do know it was, to answer that, I do know that it was advertised properly. So, uh, Mr. Hancock can speak to that, because they had to go through that portion of it along with planning and zoning director. So. So all I, I can't get into the rest of it, but we did follow the steps for it to be advertised, but those were text amendments. And all I'm gonna say is again, please y'all show up and get involved. I know a lot of you. I knocked on your doors, I called you, so just come a little bit more often and get involved.
Excuse me, let me ask just one question of the Panhandle people here. Am I the only one that just didn't know about this? That's just, you know, I think I'm an informed citizen and, you know, my concern is, like I said, the pro, the appearance of any ethical conflict of interest concerns me because we've been fighting this particular, um, development for a long time. And, um, I appreciate you taking the time to answer that.
Tell me your name again?
Tina Shiflett.
You talked to me today.
Yeah, I was the one that told you about the phone problem.
I thought we had a long, good conversation.
We did, but I had a couple of other questions.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Anybody else? Come on, sir.
While he coming, we have a meeting every other month at South Clayton Recreation Center. I'm gonna look forward to seeing everybody there too. Come on now.
Yes, sir. Van Addison from Hampton Estates, uh, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioner. Uh, I just want to share, I mean, most of all the, all the issues that I want to discuss is, have already came to the table. But I do want you guys to recognize something, that we have a community, and we all came together because we wanted the same common goal. I mean, we talk, we communicate, we have a great, you know, neighborhood watch program, we have all this. I moved down to Hampton Estates because this was the place I wanted to retire. You know, thirty-one years in the military, you know, fourteen years working with the government, it was the perfect place. Just to hear this brought tears to my eyes. And we all talk about it. And we sit around and say, "How can we fix it?" You know, "What can we do?" The last time we came here, and we didn't get a chance to talk about the issue, we had people standing on the wall, all in support, and it got tabled to this time. Those people are not with us. We don't have the crowd, we don't have the numbers that we had the first time. But everybody wants the same thing. And it's really touched my heart when people work for this purpose, and it could be turned around on one decision. No matter what you say, no matter what anybody here say, you guys have the power. They say approve or deny. So all this stuff that we worked for, you know, we got low crime rates, great education, we send our kids off to school, you know, we out there doing yard work, flowers, stuff. These are our glory days. And now we got other threats that we have to worry about. Because you want to put four houses on one piece of, uh, one acre of land, whatever it might be, we don't know. And when we leave here tonight, our hearts still gonna be pumping because we don't know what the decision really is going to be. We will hope that y'all consider what we said, and this is all we can do. We're at y'all mercy, okay? We love the way things are, and if you come down there, you'll see why all of us come together. You'll see. We are wonderful, we stick by each other. Look at us, all us old, you know? We just wanna, we just wanna live out the rest of our days. That's, and, and we want to be comfortable, we don't have to worry about crimes, we don't have to worry about any of those things. And, uh, and we all here for the same purpose. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I am Roy Moore, and I live at 525 Inman. But I will take a different approach in talking to you. When I retired, I needed to find something else to do. And, uh, what I found was that I go around buying lots, property, all over the place. I have in my portfolio about four or five lots. I don't buy anything with a house on it, just a lot. Um, I said, I, I have four, because I sold the fifth one, uh, just recently. And you need to hear the story. A gentleman bought a house in a subdivision like what we, what they're trying to do for Victoria Meadows, one house and a quarter acre. He had two kids. The two kids were running him crazy because in that subdivision, um, they, all they could do was just run around the house, around and around, and that was it. There was nothing else in the area. He, I have, I own the lot next door to him, and he found me somehow, and he wanted to buy the house. Well, I'd already been in conversations with, uh, the developer. He needed that space, so I sold him the lot. Um, and he's happy now. But, uh, in buying lots, I meet and talk to a lot of developers and builders. And, uh, essentially, if developers consider the surrounding amenities before considering putting four houses on, on an acre, they look for churches, parks, lakes, transportation corridors, public transportation, in some cases rivers and oceans. I have a couple up and down in Florida. Uh, shopping areas, auto repair facilities, restaurants, libraries, things like this. These items are seriously considered because the people who live in that type of community need outlets for their own well-being. The last lot I sold, I just, just described it to you. And, uh, I have about six, seven more that I'm going to turn over as quickly as I possibly can, and then go out and buy some more. For reference, there's a housing area on McDonough Road in, uh, Lovejoy, close to nineteen forty-one. There's another housing area going up across the river tracks. This is in the area where the, uh, Walmart is in Lovejoy.
That's the city of Lovejoy, sir.
Both of these ventures are close to the same Walmart. Other shopping opportunities, restaurants, parks, library. Also apartments and condominiums in the area. Compare that area to Victoria Estates, and you'll find that there is no comparison. Nothing out there but us, all of us. We live out there, we enjoy it. The Panhandle residents live out there by choice. It's peaceful, it's serene, and it's not in a crowded housing jungle. We cannot reach out and touch the houses next door to each other. In my case, I have, I'm sitting on about four acres. My neighbors are so far away, they can't hear me talking. That's fine, and that's what goes on in that entire area. You also have to keep in mind that across Woolsey, there's a place called the Calvin Center. They have horses over there. What would happen if kids that were, if they, if you do this, uh, Victoria Meadows thing? Kids, young adults, or someone else goes over there messing with the horses? You would really hear about it then. The Panhandle residents do not want the housing culture to change. We have really objected to this zoning request. When the developer purchased the property, he knew what the zoning was. And just because they want to change the zoning does not mean that it must be done. The Panhandle residents fought long and hard years ago, you've already heard that. But this was done to maintain the integrity of the area, and we fully expect you, our commissioners, our representatives, to listen to the residents of the Panhandle. I recently heard a comment concerning housing research in Clayton County. Four houses per acre was the going trend. This may be correct for areas such as around Walmart, across the highway, up and down nineteen forty-one, they're doing it. Victoria Meadows is nothing like that. It doesn't fit. Here's a joke. If it doesn't quit, you need to quit. We are humbly requesting that you leave the zoning the way it is. And just a closing comment, if I can find it here. In the normal circumstances, when developers build communities such as what they want for Victoria Meadows, they're generally pretty close to something like a megachurch. A lot of people go there, so they can sell it. They build them for people over fifty-five. But, uh, primarily, if it's somewhere close to a hospital, doctors' offices, or facilities that they can get assistance when they need it. If you're in the right area, uh, a drawing card is an ocean, a lake, a, a major river, of course. Shopping areas, grocery stores, parks. We don't have any of those. The request is, leave the zoning the way it is, please. Thank you.
Our chairman and commissioners, uh, to follow up with just said.
State your name first, sir.
My name is Van Srees, I live in Hampton Estates. I have properties in different states, but I chose to live in Hampton, Hampton Estates. Uh, I'm a retired chief scientist for EPA, and also for the United Nations. Uh, and I want to address this from a different point of view. Uh, and I want to ask a few questions, and I don't know who to ask. I, I guess some of those should go towards the developer, if he or she is here. And my questions are, has anybody done a, uh, environmental impact study? Four hundred, five hundred houses? Has anybody done a risk assessment? Has anybody done an ecological assessment? There are more than a dozen lakes in there. And it's sitting on an aquifer. What about that when that gets impacted? That impacts your drinking water that you may be drinking. Have you considered the Flint River? It's called a Flint River watershed, a Flint River basin. The river starts around South Fulton, uh, North Clayton, right on that airport. And it runs, uh, down, uh, the Fed County Board, Clayton County border, and it runs all the way down through Spalding County. It runs down to where you get your strawberries from, and your watermelons, and your cantaloups, and your good food. And it runs all the way down and joins up, the Chattahoochee, and joins up with Appalachia Cola. Three hundred and fifty miles. Pollute that river, seriously. Wherever it may be polluted, it's gonna impact further down the river. Can you imagine what is gonna happen to sick people, sick animals, a sick ecological system, sick fish? We got cows and goats grazing, well, it's dark now, but grazing on Woolsey Road. Am I not right? Have, ha, ha, has anybody on the commission board or developer contacted the EPA? Or EPD, or Department of Agriculture, or the Corps of Engineer, Engineers? Has anybody talked to Spalding County, which is just downriver? Has anybody talked to Fed County? Has anyone spoken with McDonough, Henry County? I spoke to a couple of them, and they're not pleased. Because what's happened up here, well, you know, stuff flows downhill. Clayton County, Clayton County, Georgia, has one, if not the best water treatment facility in the whole country. And I have a flyer over that, if you want to see it. And do you want to taint their reputation for a fistful of dollars? Just think about it. People travel around the world just to come to see what Fulton County water system i- is doing. And I think it's a wonderful thing, but... Clayton County. It, it's doing, okay? But do you want to taint their reputation just because someone comes in and builds four or five hundred houses, uh, down in a trusher, cluster of, uh, South Fulton? I used to live in Fulton.
Yeah, we're starting, we're starting to get that picture.
We have on the north side, we have the world's business airport. Am I not right? The largest airport. We have in between there, we have trucks and warehouses, trucks and warehouses. And then we have on the south side, another airport, okay? Which has, which is spanning via Henry County and building. Before we know it, we're just gonna be a cluster of pollution. From air pollution, to truck pollution, to warehouse pollution, what are we gonna do? So, I, I, I'm saying this on behalf of just anybody and everybody that lives in Clayton County. Because pollution affects everybody, and in particularly the neighborhood of where we live, if you build all these houses, which is gonna impact everyone. So once again, have you could ta, contact the Fed County, Spalding County? Have you talked to Atlanta Regional Council about what's going on? Because one different county can set the pace for another county. So please be careful. And again, what we do here can cause a cumulative effect which flows downstream and affects more and more cities further down. So thank you. I wish you would really consider what's being done and take a critical look at this watershed, the Flint River watershed, and all the tributaries that are associated with it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bray?
I am Crandall Bray. I am representing the developer who's buying this property to develop it, but I, it, let...
Let's be, just be respectful.
I expect y'all to be fair to me. I'm here on the block, we have a right to be here.
Mr. Bray, address us, and please, let's be respectful of the speaker, please.
I am somewhat confused, Ms. Warner, that you already made a decision before we had an opportunity to have a hearing. Now, I didn't have an agenda, so I couldn't, I couldn't, I would've got up here early, but it's past my bedtime, so you just have to bear with me. Let me, let me clear up something about this particular zoning. This is a piece of property that was turned down in two thousand and four. It went to court in two thousand and five, then it was referred back from the court over to the commission, which existed at that time. The commission, it existed in two thousand and five, rezoned it to RS-180 Conservation. That's what it is today. Subsequent to that, I guess in two thousand and seven, there was a grading permit issued, and the streets were, started to be put in, and yes, the economy hit in two thousand and eight, whatever, and it crashed. But the property's already under development, and if you look at your transitional rules, that is in your ordinance, it says that even though a commissioner's come along later and changed the rules, it still goes back to what it was originally zoned, assuming that application was filed. And it was simply because it was in the courts, so I, I looked at the court records, an application copy of it's over there, so... It's zoned, it originally was zoned RS-180 Conservation, which as I read your ordinance, it existed at that time, it's one point seven houses per acre, not four or five, whatever it is. It does allow the smaller lots, but as, if you read those eighteen restrictions or covenants that went with it when they zoned it, it's, it had some twenty-five percent of the houses had to be three thousand square feet or more, brick, some of them this way, and it, it just had sixteen or eighteen, I think there was eighteen covenants that went with that zoning. So, anyway, I know it's a misconception, and I know I'm probably wasting your time, but I wanted you to hear the side of the developer, why he's on it, and I have... And I have filed, I did file the constitutional letter. I assume you all got that. Supreme Court says I got to do it. I filed it with Jack, I filed it with zoning director, and it's on file, and it sets forth all of these constitutional challenges. Thank you.
My name is Margie Traywick. I live on five ninety-nine Inman Road, Hampton, Georgia.
Please, please.
We have lived in Clayton County for fifty-three years. The last...
State your name again, ma'am.
My name is Margie Traywick. I live at five ninety-nine Inman Road, Hampton, Georgia. We've lived in Clayton County for fifty-three years, and sixteen of those years, we have lived in our home in Hampton. We love the area. We have great neighbors. We appreciate what they do and what they do with their property, too. What I want to do is, I know what Brother Crandall says about what they're supposed to do, but I think if you look at some of these things that he's talking about, it means that you, if you've got to have permits, we can't find any permits. If there has been any permits issued for any of that back then, it's been taken out of the Victoria Meadows file because we couldn't find permits. So he can't go forward with permits that don't exist, or we can't find. But I want to read some quotes from the Comprehensive Plan that we paid, we, the county, paid dearly for this plan. And I quote, "In its review of the text joining map amendments, the zoning advisory group and the Board of Commissioners shall pay reasonable regard to the most recently adopted Comprehensive Plan, current conditions and the character of the structures and uses of each district. Third, to the most desirable use for which the land is, in each district, is adapted. Fourth, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction. Five, responsible development and growth, and the public health, safety, and welfare." Of course, this, like I say, is coming directly out of the Comprehensive Plan. We are in the, in a watershed area, Army Corps of Engineer Wetlands, state water buffer, the water quality buffers. So in our, in our little area there, that we're trying to put so many houses on, there's a lot of wetlands in there, there's a lot of state, state water property. There's a lot of things, places, that you really can't build a house on. So therefore, they put conservation in there so they can take those houses off of there, put that in conservation, take those houses and put it up there with the others, and make seven thousand square foot lots, which is not a good idea. In the, continuing with some of the things that I'm reading directly from the Comprehensive Plan, in the southern portion of the county, the Panhandle, the existing land use pattern is more rural with low and very low density residential development. Residential densities in areas classified as conservation residential should be the lowest in Clayton County with a maximum of one house per acre. To help preserve open space and protect those areas that are not appropriate for development of any kind, such as wetlands and footplains, floodplains, new housing developments in the area should be required to employ appropriate conservation subdivision design principles. The county's high concentration of low-cost residential development is becoming an increasing burden on community facilities and services. The county is losing longtime residents and more affluent residents to neighboring counties that offer higher-quality houses and community amenities, need more, more executive houses for executive professionals and higher-wage earners associated with local business. As I say, all of this is coming directly out of the Comprehensive Plan that we paid dearly for, and you should be looking at to, to kind of let that judge what you want to do with it. Now, my closing thoughts for you is this. Each of you, each one of you commissioners in every district, has been voted on and put in office by your citizens, by the citizens of us, us, in this county. And what happens down here, if you think it's just going to be happening to us, it's not. You're going to have to help pay dearly for it, too. But you were elected and put in office with our trust that you were going to take care of us, not anybody that comes in and wants to tear up our, our, all of our natural resources and all of our quiet places. We need, we need to keep something about Clayton County that we can be proud of, and that lower end of that county is. If you look at all, go back and look in some of the other comprehensive things, I couldn't read the whole thing about all of it, but it says that in the Panhandle area, it's an area that should be kept very, very carefully because it has got a watershed, it's got the water facilities, it's, the water, as he said before, is, it, the water affects the whole county. I mean, that's where you're getting your drinking water. And a lot of that is we're trying to preserve down in our county. And what I would like to do, I would like to ask each and every one of you to think about, you know, what, what is down there? And if you hadn't driven down there, I'd recommend you do. So I beg you to search your hearts and see how you would feel if you were in our positions. I'm talking to each and every one of you commissioners. I, I hope that each one of you will search your heart and know how we feel, how we feel like we're being violated, and how, and I know, I hate to say this, Chief Turner, but you have been violated yourself, and you know how that feels. We appreciate what you have done, and we do not want to, we, we have supported you, we have campaigned for you, we've done a lot of things for you, and we appreciate it. But I think if you, I think you feel it just about the same way we do. Seven thousand square foot lots is just not a good fit for this neighborhood and a house in an area where everything is on one-plus acre lots. So the county, Holks County will suffer. So please vote to deny, deny this change. Search your heart and see just how you would feel, and have some compassion on us. I need, I need, I need all five of you commissioners, I need all of you to feel what we feel, and let God lead you in what you, what you do. Thank you.
It's almost good morning. My name's Sharon Cobb. I live down on Panhandle Road in Hampton. I also want to clarify some things. I used to work for Clayton County Community Development back in the day, and then I was asked by builders to come quit the county and come work with them, which I still do. I get permits for builders. So I want to clarify on the Victoria Meadows, those ten lots that are down there that already have the houses, one house per acre, those were, those were permitted by me, and they were zoned agricultural, one house per acre. So there's permits out there because I done them. So, and I actually had to come over here because at the time, it was a preliminary plat, and I had to come to the legal department over here to get the commissioners to sign off on it. So for them to say that it's not, that it was always this other zoning is a lie. It's a lie, because I done them, I know. So I'll just ask you to keep it at, you know, one house per acre, like it should be.
Come on, sir. No, it's time now.
Chairman and...
We'll get you next, sir, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak. I came to Clayton County in eighty-three through the military.
State your name, please.
I'm sorry, Charles Cooper. I live in Sandy State Panhandle Road. As I stated, I came through the military in eighty-three. I lived in Riverdale, I lived in Jonesboro. I came down here because I wanted that space. I wanted to be at a place and have a home, a lot the size I have. I drive by this property every day. I've seen it for the last eleven years. And when I was informed that it would become four houses, and again, I don't know what side the houses are, common sense tells us, if we build an eighteen-square-foot house that sells for, I've been told, two ninety. How many of y'all would buy one at eighteen hundred square feet for two ninety? I don't believe that. I don't believe that. It's going to be, say, one sixty, one seventy-five. I live in Sandy State. So when that realtor, if I decide to sell my house, that realtor's going to look around and see what they went for. He's going to see ten houses or four houses at this property going for one hundred and sixty-five. So they're going to immediately drop my property value down. I also like the area I'm in because Clayton County Police take care of us. I've been there eleven years. I've heard three sirens, and I spent forty-two years in law enforcement. So we live in a good area. We want to keep it away. I leave you with one thought. One house, one acre.
All right, now I am Buddy Rappo. And I did sign to speak, but no, I didn't know that. But I have lived in Clayton County myself for forty-five years. I lived in Riverdale when Riverdale had nothing. I have lived in the Panhandle for thirty years. I bought my land, I built my house. I now work for Clayton County School Board System. I will tell you this right now, that area right there is the last little part of Clayton County. The school systems, I know because I work in the school system. The school systems are overpopulated right now in that area. I know this for a fact. I also know that if you put more houses in there, there's that one little section left. There's a store that's on Upper Woolsey Road, and it's part of, it's in Hampton, or part of it's in Henry County, and part of it's in Clayton County. I know this because I owned that store, or leased that store. So there's very little left in Clayton County in that area. So if you start putting more houses, what are you going to do? Build more schools? You're going to put more schools down in that area? There's very little left. So it's not beneficial to put a whole lot of houses in that area, because there's not much left. The school systems are full down there. We keep building, they're overpopulated, classrooms are overpopulated now. So for these reasons, like I said, I've been in this area for a long time, I've been here thirty years. I bought my land, and I built my house. I've owned that little store there for a while, and like I said, we've got to keep it the way it is as much as possible. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Linda Fowler. I live at one three five four two Panhandle Road, which is three houses off of the Inman Road, just down the road from Victoria Meadows, which I pass quite often. And I really didn't come tonight with the intentions of speaking, but as I've sit here tonight and listened to everyone, I feel like that I have a duty to my community and my neighbors to also speak out in regards to the zoning of this area that is in question. When you can sit in your recliner and watch your TV in your neighbor's house next door, or maybe hear a conversation going on out the window at your neighbor's house next door, that can lead to a lot of problems. When you get people living in those close proximities, there is going to be trouble. And as mentioned earlier, we have very little crime in our area down there, so the police don't really come into that area much because there's not a lot going on. But when you start putting three to four houses per acre, I think we're going to be looking at a lot of problems coming up. And I would hope, and I don't know if it's unethical, but Victor Hill lives in our community. A lot of you may not know that, but Victor Hill lives in the community. And if it was unethical for him to not be here, I could understand, but I would have, would have liked to have seen Victor Hill here tonight, for it seems like a lot of people listen to him. He lives on one of those acre-plus lots in our area. And I would hate to think that by bringing these houses in and putting three to four houses per acre, it's definitely going to call in more police surveillance in the area, there'll be more crime in our area. My daddy moved us up to Clayton County in nineteen sixty-four from Florida, and I've lived in Clayton County since sixty-four, with the exceptions of moving away to, for us to go with our careers. We did retire in twenty-ten and moved back to the Clayton County area. But before that, we, my mom and dad, we were, moved into the area, in the South Lake area, which was really a prime and really nice location at that time. After the Olympics, the area began to get bad. A lot of crime was going on, there were murders in the area. You used to never hear Clayton County on the news. You never heard of Clayton County being on the news for murders or break-ins, or, and I'm sure it's probably part due to the sign of the times. But we used, he used to bring us down to Panhandle Road. There was a lake there, right off Panhandle Road, that we called Gladwell Lake. And the people that lived on that lake were the Gladwells, and we used to fish in that lake. And there were hardly any houses, no houses whatsoever on Panhandle Road or in that area at that time. And it was a, really a desirable area, I think, to live in. So my brother, myself, and my husband decided we wanted to move my mom and dad out of the South Lake Mall area back in nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, and get them down to an area that was more desirable, a safer area where there were less people. And we were still living in Chicago at the time. And in two thousand and four, there were five houses built right there at the corner of Inman Road and Panhandle Road. My mom and dad looked around at the houses, so my husband, my brother and I, we decided we were going to purchase one of those houses and move them out of the South Lake Mall area to that area where we could go to bed at night and, and feel somewhat at ease about them being out of a lot of crime, and where we felt that they would be safe there. So we have had, we have actually had a house there on Panhandle since two thousand and four, and I have watched that area, in that area, grow somewhat. And when they started construction on Panhandle Road, close to the wetlands there, where the Clayton County Water Authority has, has their land, wetlands, they started the construction there to put in a subdivision. I thought, oh no, here's the beginning of something that's going to be a trend. Every piece of land down here is going to start filling up with houses. But I was really disappointed whenever I heard the fact that they were looking to start putting three to four houses per acre. putting three to four houses per acre. One house per acre is a plenty. You can keep your business within that acre pretty well, but when you start looking in the windows and, and watching TV out your window at the house next door, or you hear a conversation with a husband and wife that are arguing, these are all gonna lead to problems, more crime, and, and we just ask you to please reconsider, give us the opportunity to live in the area that we have chose to live in and live in the rural area, a small part of Clayton County that is still rural and can remain rural, if the commissioners and everyone else, with the exception of Crandall Bray, give us the opportunity to keep our, our neighborhood, our homes in an area that is desirable, that is quiet, peaceful, friendly, and, and drop the idea of four houses, three to four houses per acre. We love that area and would like for it to remain the same. Thank you for hearing me.
Hi, my name is Wanda Sampson, and I just want to say, first of all, thank you Commissioner for fighting for it to stay a residential area. I am from Detroit, Michigan, and, excuse me, and I know a lot about city, and my husband is a, a disabled veteran. So when he relocated, we relocated down here, we lived in the Rex area, and we really wanted to move away just for the peace, because sometimes when you've been in the military, you suffer for some other things, and so the noise and the busyness of it can be much. And, um, he grew up in Detroit, and I know in a very prestigious area, there's a driveway, there's a house, there's a driveway, there's a house, and in some other areas, you do have a lot of land. So my plea is, I'm saying thank you, and I understand that we need to move forward, I understand the big picture, but I do request, as everyone else, to say first, thank you, but we do say, you can build, just give us our land, don't build with so many houses on a lot. Just let us have a, what it says, one house, one acre. Because for someone to buy property, and we come in and they say, this is what it's been, they'll never change it, it's one house, one acre. So now you come and you say, well, we're gonna change the rule. Just one house, one acre, no problem with building. Thank you for not letting businesses come in and letting it be a residential area. But from somebody who comes from a very populated place, it's necessary for others that have been veterans to have some peace and to have some quiet, um, in a different way. And that's all I want to say. Thank you for all you do.
Anybody else? Come on.
Chris Gallagher, Clayton County. I, I understand what they're talking about, 'cause when I moved into my community in ninety-three, they were just starting to build homes there. They had certain rules and regulations there. Homes were going for three hundred thousand dollars on up there. Unfortunately, a contractor came in there, had political connections, got rules changed there that use smaller lots, where you could basically reach out and touch your neighbor's homes there. I know that I'm never gonna get the money out of my house because of those cheaper homes coming in there. They have high turnovers there, uh, people will lose them, then somebody comes in out of state, they'll buy five of them, become slum landlords there. We have a hard time getting them up to keep the property. I help run the neighborhood watch there. Most of the calls that we get aren't for the big homes, it's the homes that are close together, their TV's too loud there, their kids ran through my yard, stepped foot on my property, my neighbor came a foot over onto my property, cut the grass too low, I don't cut the grass that low. I mean, ridiculous things there. And, uh, it's really brought down the property values there, and I understand what they're, they're saying, and it's funny that, you know, she brought up Sheriff Hill there, 'cause he comes to a lot of homeowners' meetings there, and we talked the one time and he said that, you know, I don't believe in homes being on small lots and so close together, 'cause, you know, you'll get gentlemen, they're sitting out there drinking a hot summer day, and then they get into fights there, and crime statistics show that in those areas, they have higher, you know, crimes from people being just too close together there, and, uh, a lot of developers unfortunately just throwing up cheap homes just to make a dollar instead of building quality homes there. So I hope that you respect and keep the regulations the way that they are, and just keep, you know, one house on an acre lot there, keep their property values up, keep the neighborhoods, you know, safe and that, so that, that, you know, they don't lose money like I am. I'll never get the money out of my house with all those cheap homes that they build around me. I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Anybody else? You hadn't heard the last word yet.
Micky Garber, from Rex, Georgia. People here are talking about how long they've been in the county. I'm gonna tell you, I've been in this county seventy-one years, three months and nineteen I do not live in the district of this zoning dispute. However, any zoning within the county affects me ultimately indirectly or directly. If I don't defend the people in other districts, how can I expect them to defend my positions in my district? This being said, let me ask, why do we continuously create poverty rather than wealth? Why do we continually have a wealth drain and a brain drain? I don't think I have to expound any further on these remarks. You all know them well. Let me say in closing, our lives are balanced between good and evil, and your next vote tips the scale. Thank you.
Commissioner Warner?
Make sure I say this right. I make a recommendation that we uphold, um, the estate residential zoning in this area.
Oh, that was it?
That's it, sorry. I'm about like the other gentleman.
I'll suck in the motion, are there any questions? All right, for the record, Ms. Pan. The motion is to, uh, uphold the...
To uphold the estate.
The estate, uh, zoning. Please explain what that means.
The, uh, that would mean, pretty much that the, the initiated, the, the request to initiate the rezoning is null and void because the request before us today is to rezon it from the, uh, it was a rezon from ER to RS one-ten. Since we, since the motion here is for it to remain ER, then the application is, is not valid and could be just withdrawn, I think would be the appropriate.
No, I don't want to withdraw it. I want to deny it. The reason I did that, 'cause I want to make sure we heard everybody, 'cause people got upset last time, so I want to make sure we heard everybody that needed to be here.
So she wants it to stay as stay, so she just need to deny the zoning request.
Then I'm denying it. I'm denying it.
Yes, and my motion, I'm sucking the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes.
No, ma'am, no, no. From the board members. Questions from the board members.
Stay with the rezoning.
No, ma'am, from the, uh, board, board members. All right, here in those favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
I'm gonna, thank you all so much, uh...
We still have another item. Do we, do we do the last item?
Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Please, 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 we still are in, in meeting. We are still meeting.
Chairman, does that mean that the property still remains ER, one house per acre?
That's correct. Excuse me, Mr. Hancock.
Don't have to consider the last one.
We found the first one. Okay, we're good then.
We're good.
Yes, okay, so we need a, an executive session for...
Litigation.
Litigation of personnel. Uh, do I have a motion going to executive session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
So, second.
Those a favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. All right, y'all have a good night? All right, is there a motion to reconvene? Motion to reconvene?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those a favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Mr. Rejiki, where is he at? Protect the podium, what's your request?
My request is to grant a one-time bonus to my HVAC inspector who is currently doing plumbing inspections as a result of one of our plumbing inspectors, uh, being ill. Uh, he has been ill for a while, and the HVAC inspector went and took the certification for plumbing, passed it, and I've been doing it for a while right now. So the, my request is to give him a one-time stip, stip, stipend or bonus of ten percent that will occur in each fiscal year that he continues to do that. The idea is to try out what he has been doing, when it becomes overwhelming, then we might think about outsourcing it.
Just so I'm clear, you say a one-time stipend of ten percent?
Yes.
Is that why he's doing both jobs, or is that one-time lump sum, 'cause you made it sound like one time a year?
Yeah, o, one time a year, only in the fiscal year that he's doing it.
One, that ten percent applies to his salary during the time that he's doing both inspections?
Yes.
So once somebody else, once the other gentleman comes back, then that stipend will discontinue?
Uh, yes. Yes, uh, I don't know how to rephrase it, but yes, it's only one-time bonus while he's doing the two jobs.
Say stipend, it's not a bonus. What we call it a bonus?
Stipend.
It can be governed as a stipend, so what we will do is whatever that ten percent would be, it's a one-time payout. Once the gentleman comes back, he will revert back to his base salary, he wouldn't continue that stipend. If, if the individual's back in that position, post, we're not sure how long the employee's gonna be out, but he's been out for an extended period of time now, and somebody, he has to continue to work, so this is the way we're looking at compensating that individual in that space.
All right. Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, I move that we, uh, grant Mr. GK's request of the, uh, one-time stipend for the employee that's doing two jobs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
No, I got a statement. Are we paying police officers, firefighters and everybody else that do more than one job? We already gave Mr. GK a raise in his department. I get more phone calls than a little bit about this department and the inefficiencies of it, and so now, because we got a manager that has difficulty managing their department, we gonna go in and give a person an additional raise? That's a slap in the face to twenty-five-hundred employees that do other jobs all the time, every day.
I don't think this is a point of mismanagement, this is a point of understaffing.
And that's management.
No.
Now the man's upset, the, the other inspector's upset.
So the recommendation need to be to have somebody in there to do the job and do it effectively, not to add more load to somebody else. I just think it's wrong. It's just wrong.
Any other, uh, comments?
Yeah, I just think as, as we're building and, you know, we've heard for months or a year, the county, we want the county to be open for business, we're open for business, we gotta have the manpower to service it. We're open for business and...
I just want to start with the fact that, um, let's stop making, keeping phone calls of people saying that they can't even get through and don't ever see the people come out and help them. So this is not the only issue in that department. We keep trying to put a Band-Aid on things if we don't want to fix it, and that's how we're gonna be open for business.
Any other question, statements?
No, that's it.
Those, uh, in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
For one that passes, motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Well, second, those favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.